Oh, sorry.
Yeah. Good evening. So I'd like to call the meeting of Union 26 to order. This meeting is being recorded and live broadcast or tape broadcast? Tape broadcast by Amherst Media. And I'm Mike Morris, I'm the superintendent. And the reason I am starting this meeting is it's reorganization of Union 26. My only task as temporary chair of this is to facilitate the selection of a chair, and then I gladly hand the gavel over to whoever is selected as chair. But before I do that, I want to introduce CeeLo Sharkis as the new recorder for our committees. Those of you in Pelham got to meet her last week. So thank you, CeeLo, for taking on this role. And just because CeeLo's new and is taking notes on a very complex set of meetings tonight, I wondered if we could go around and just say your name, your role, in terms of what committee you're on, and particularly noting whether you're on Union 26 or not for this first round. So Ms. Hall, would you mind starting?
Sure. Sarah Hall, Pelham, and Union 26.
Ramon Manino, Pelham, Regional, and Union 26.
Kip Fanch from Levert, Regional, and Levert School Committee.
So just to note, not Union 26. Yeah.
Allison McDonald, Amherst, Union 26, and Region.
Anastasia Ordones, Amherst, and Region.
Carrie Spitzer, Amherst, and Region.
Eric Nakajima, Amherst, and Region. And just to note it, Allison McDonald is the vice chair of the Region, and I'm the chair of the Region.
Peter Demling, Amherst, Region, and Union 26.
Druin Cunningham, Assistant Superintendent.
Great. And so I'm going to ask, if you're on Union 26, not just for CeeLo, but also for the audience, could you raise your hand, just so we can see who's in a meeting right now and who is spectating a meeting right now?
Sure.
Mr. Demling, I mean, you look like you have something you want to share?
So I believe that the membership of Union 26 from the Amherst School Committee is defined as the three officers from the Amherst School Committee. So I think by de facto, the chair is a member of the Union 26, unless I'm mistaken.
Sorry. No, that's absolutely right. I was, for some reason, thinking about the Region, not Amherst School Committee. That's right, Mr. Demling.
So we'll try that one more time?
Yes, please.
So if you're in a meeting of Union 26 which has been called, could you raise your hand? Thank you. And so, as I said, my only role is to facilitate the selection process for chair, and then that chair will then take on the next step of officers, and then we'll move on to our next meeting. Mr. Manino?
Who's the current chair?
So I'm the current chair, because there is no chair when we organize, but the prior chair... No, no, I don't mean to be so funny about it, I'm just trying to answer, but the prior chair was Mr. Demling from Amherst. Is there any nominations for chair? Mr. Manino?
Mr. Demling.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Demling, is that amenable to you?
Yes.
Are there other nominations that people would like to share? Seeing none, all those in favor of Mr. Demling becoming chair, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Abstention?
Abstain.
Okay. Well, you may abstain, but you're chair nonetheless.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we'll move down the line. We'll do vice chair next, and then secretary. And just so you know, secretary in this context is really vice vice chair. It's not note taker. And the role really only comes into play if both the chair and the vice chair are not available at the meeting, and so the secretary would chair that meeting. So are there any nominations for vice chair of Union 26? Ms. Manino?
Anastasia.
Is there a second?
Second.
Anastasia, is this... Do you accept this nomination?
I am flattered. However, I'm also a little concerned, because this is a reorganization, and I will not be running the Amherst School Committee at the end of this term. So while I'm happy to serve in this capacity for the next couple of months, it would require a reorganization very soon after, so...
Okay, so we had a nomination. Do we have a second? I'm spacing.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, a second, okay. Are there other nominations for vice chair? I would nominate Mr. Manino. Is there a second?
I second.
I nominate a second. Mr. Manino, is this amenable to you?
Yes.
Okay, so we have two nominations on the floor, so we'll vote on the first nomination first. All those in favor of Mr. Ordones as vice chair? Opposed? Abstain? So the nomination fails. One vote in favor, Mr. Manino. Three votes opposed. Ms. Hall, Ms. McDonald, and Mr. Demling. One abstention, Ms. Ordones. Fight. I counted that correctly. For the second nomination, all those in favor, Mr. Manino for vice chair, please raise your hand. Opposed? Abstain? Okay, that carries 4-0-1 with Mr. Manino abstaining. Congratulations, Mr. Manino.
Yes, thank you.
For secretary, we'll take nominations for secretary. Yes, Mr. Ordones?
I would like to nominate Sarah Hall.
I'll second that.
I am amenable to that.
Okay. Are there any other nominations for secretary? Seeing none, all those in favor of Ms. Hall as secretary for Union 26, please raise your hand to signify aye. Opposed? Abstentions? And that carries 4-0-1 with Ms. Hall abstaining. So that concludes the reorganization item. We will now turn to our joint meeting, and I will turn the gavel over to Mr. Nakajima to call to order the Regional School Committee.
You don't know I'm going to do that. But I'm gonna. Seeing the presence of a quorum, a call to order this meeting of the Amherst-Pelham Regional School Committee. It is being taped by Amherst Media for future broadcast. As a first item of business, actually, prior to the item number two on our agendas, just wanted to offer a public comment. I don't see anyone here to make a public comment, but it's one thing we always try to do, so it was an omission that it wasn't on the agenda for this point. And if we have a future joint meeting of Union 26 and the Region, we'll make sure that the published agenda does, in fact, have a public comment section on it. I don't assume there's any announcements from the joint committees? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to item two. Timeline of superintendent contract negotiations. This item is intended to be a discussion of the two committees, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Demling in a second for his comments before we begin. But this, what we're talking about and what we're not, I just wanted to be clear about what we're talking about, what we're not talking about. What we are talking about is the question of whether or what the timing would be for our committees to discuss the contract, future contract status of the superintendent at the end of his current contract. We have the option of beginning negotiations now. We could wait until sometime in the future to begin discussions and negotiations on the topic. That's up to the committee to decide. I'm distinguishing between that and the content of those discussions, which would include items like what the length of a contract should be, what the changes and other elements of it would be, or even frankly, I'll even include within that the desirability of having an extension or future contract, or not having a future contract. This is literally about the timing of doing so. And so this could actually end up being a really short conversation, if the members of both committees have clear opinions on the subject. It had been the impression of the previous and current chair of Union 26, as well as myself, and then we talked briefly with Dr. Morris about the question of, you know, when his current contract is up in June of 2021, June 30th. And that would mean that next year, for want of a better way of phrasing it, depending upon whether or not a contract is successfully negotiated, if we chose to do that. If we didn't, he'd be a lame duck, essentially, as you might call it, meaning the status would be indeterminate going into the final year. The actual contract language we have says that we need to notify the superintendent no later than December 31st, 2019? 2020, excuse me, 2020, of our decision. In failing any communication whatsoever, the current contract provisions automatically provide for a one-year extension of the contract, which then, at that point, runs its course and terminates at the end. So anyways, that's the provision in the contract, be that as it may. In our discussions, and then we reached out to, and the superintendent may have something else to share, but Glenn Kutcher at the MASC, on the question of, you know, is there, in fact, a sort of standard approach or expectation around the timing of when these contract negotiations occur? And Glenn Kutcher was very generous to write back. I was like, we can share you the content of the email, but with you after the meeting. But we did it, we got it back from today, and essentially what he said was that it is a general expectation of superintendents that they would not, they prefer not, to go into a final year as a lame duck, is the term I'm using, with no... And he said there is a variety of approaches to that. The most minimal approach is engaging in some preliminary discussion during the second to final year of the contract that indicates a desire to negotiate an extension or a new contract, which signals to the superintendent an interest, a general interest, on the part of the committee to extend or create a new contract. But it is, in fact, a more standard practice to negotiate and execute, as a typical matter, a contract extension. There are circumstances in which fully new contracts are negotiated, but oftentimes what they do is, given the timing of one, two, three-year contract ending being in the second year, either way you go, you're in the second year, you're counting down from two to one or from one to two, that rather than saying, okay, we'll negotiate a new contract, and it'll be three or four or five, whatever the heck it is, years from the end, which means from 2021, it'd be a matter of negotiating a contract now and doing it for one or two, three years. So I'm literally summarizing Glenn Kutcher's email. But that the gist of it was that it was not typical to leave a superintendent hanging in terms of what's going to happen to them going into their final year. The comment Mr. Kutcher made, in addition to that, was that if you're not, his advice was that if you're not careful, it could have a negative impact on staff morale or expectations, because they're unsure where the district is going. You can take that, we can collectively take that advice or not. But that was the discussion of it. And so then, the two different points then would be, I'm not trying to say everything, Peter, I apologize, but I just have the thoughts summarized in my head really clearly. So I apologize, I'm going through...
You're summarizing very well.
So the two questions, and we don't actually have to answer them tonight, we can answer them done if we so choose, we don't have to answer them tonight. But also, I felt, my personal feeling, and Mr. Demling's personal feelings, was that going into essentially the beginning of our year, the last thing we should do is have a matter of this importance, which is obviously one of the central duties of a school committee, just sort of be out there in the ether, and maybe we'll get to it or talk about it whenever, in that that just doesn't sound responsible. Responsible thing to do is to lay the issue on the table, have a conversation about it, and then we can then make a deliberate decision on our parts collectively about how they want to proceed. So that's where I was going with that. Do you have any?
I got it.
Yeah. You can call on yourself, too.
Lot of the gavels. No, it was very well summarized. I guess the only thing I would add to that is, you know, once you decide which year you want to start your negotiation, or evaluation of whether you want to negotiate and extend, the next decision point is when, over the course of that year, you want to get things done. And from what we've understood so far, superintendent positions get posted around the November timeframe, and get filled fairly soon thereafter. And so if you were to go a different direction with your superintendent, you would want to finish that process up prior to the November timeframe. So that was the other reason for wanting to get that item on our agenda earlier. I think, you know, when I think about best practices, that, you know, one is, you know, we always want to do best practice, and we want to be respectful in acting in the best interests of our superintendent, but, you know, we also want to establish good reputation as a district, right? And so being able to set the expectation that, you know, that we follow best practice, I think, is a wise thing, which is why we wanted to identify what that was.
So I don't know if you, you may have nothing you ever want to add on this topic tonight, but I just, but I'd ask.
No, I appreciate it.
Or this isn't superintendent? Okay. Seeing that. So really, we're having a discussion tonight, we're laying the issue on the table. Are there any questions anyone has, or are there any initial thoughts? Yes, Ms. Manino?
We're going to discuss the timing.
Yeah.
What is the earliest practical point we can begin the discussion?
I think now. I mean, as a practical, I mean, as a literal matter, not, I don't mean literally the second, but I mean, if, as an earliest practicable time, we could make a decision tonight that we want to begin that process, I would suspect if we did so, what we'd have to do at a near-term future meeting is start laying out what that process is going to look like, and then probably also, and I'm not, I am not seeking this tonight, but there also are going to, people are going to need to get copies of the current contract, they're going to maybe even want to review their evaluations, they're going to want to look through those provisions, and you may have questions you come up with that would say, do we want to change any of these provisions? Or since they're, I mean, as a practical matter, I know school committees always exist and never term out, but as a practical matter, there are people on the committee now who weren't involved in the previous negotiation, so there may be a desire to get up to speed on what the current provisions are and why they're there, understand alternatives, look at other alternative contract models, and explore them. And I think for members of the, also logically, once we initiate that process, the superintendent himself is going to be free to come up with those similar, that's similar reflection. It's now been a couple of years, what do I think? What am I coming up with? And my point is, that point of exploration could occur even in advance, really substantively, of actually any negotiations, because the committee's got to become comfortable with what it's doing, and then think of what the process is going to be for doing it. So you know what I'm getting at? So my point is, if you want...
You outlined a process that could be involved and time-consuming, so I'd like to begin the process as soon as possible, because to say go ahead with it doesn't imply much, because you're talking about months of the review.
Are there other comments or questions, either one, or thoughts? Yes, if you have any.
I think I agree. I don't know why this keeps falling off, but I agree that we would want to give ourselves enough time to review the current contract terms and look at other options. And I think, given what the chair has laid out in terms of thinking about, you know, perhaps adding an extension, or, you know, just reviewing our different options, that I would also be in favor of starting sooner rather than later. It sounds to me, given the process that we went through last time to get this contract in place with our superintendent, it was a few months' worth of work, and that was under, you know, we were a little bit rushed, because the circumstances were not ideal. And I was comfortable with the contract that we came up with, and I think we, you know, we negotiated good terms, and we had a good process in place with the committee, sharing information and all of that. But I definitely would prefer to have a little bit more time, or a lot more time, to think about all of that. So I think my preference, if I were to just float a timeline, would be to begin, you know, a serious review among the committee this fall. And that gives us presumably, you know, about a year or so before we actually have to begin the, you know, the formal review process and the formal contract negotiations process next year, before the 2021 date. So thinking about this fall gives us a few months to talk with the superintendent about whether or not he's even interested in continuing, and then we can start thinking about the contract, you know, terms that we would want to use, and then the following fall, presumably, begin the actual contract negotiations. Does that make sense?
Other thoughts? Yes?
Yeah, and just to echo that, I like the idea of starting sooner rather than later. It's new to me, so I agree.
Agreed.
Oh, I'm sure.
So I also agree that we should start sooner rather than later. I am a little concerned about when we end the process. I think if we end, if we go into next, for a year from now, and superintendent's still in the current contract, well, so as of July 1st of next year, he's in his lame duck year. And then we get to the fall, and he's less than a year, and then we're in the fall, where we then, after a year, decided whether we want to meet, to even discuss whether we want to, you know, so right now, we're not talking about whether we should extend him or not, we're just saying whether we should ostensibly meet in an executive session and talk about, have that discussion. So I guess my concern is that if we wait that long, he's into the lame duck year. Now, I don't think that it's, that there's never a need to go, have the superintendent go into the lame duck year. But my personal preference would be to see if, to see, first get a sense of where the committee is, because we can't even, we can't really have that value discussion right now. Get a sense of where the committee...
More importantly, we're not going to.
Yes, exactly. So I would be in favor of having the discussion of getting a pulse of where the committee is, to see where we want to, where we want, when we want the process to end. Because I could imagine a scenario in which the committee would want the process to end sooner.
Ms. Manino?
I was going to second that. Can we talk about a timeframe with a beginning and an end?
We can. I mean, I don't know that we need to. I mean, to be honest with you, if you make the, I mean, not to sound funny about, well, look, if we, if people knew for certain when they wanted it to end, we could certainly make a decision about an opening and an end. I would argue, I guess my argument would be, I mean, I agree with what Mr. Demling just said, and I think I've telegraphed slightly, by the beginning of my comments, that I think the information from Mr. Kutcher about, that it's not the norm to go into lame duck years, it colors my thinking about how I'd like to approach this. But I also recognize that we're going to do this all together as a group, all of us. Every member of the committee is going to be engaged, and, or both committees are going to be engaged. And so to do that, we need, we need to make sure that everyone is operating from the same information, and the same level of comfort with how we proceed. And so my point being is that what that would allow me to say we could do, is we could start the conversation, and then whether we decide, I'm just saying this based on the conversation we've just had, if we end up deciding to negotiate a final contract a year from now, that could be an outcome. If we decide to do it sooner, that could be another outcome, and we don't really have to force either outcome now, and I'll be blunt, I don't think it's desirable, because of what I just said a moment ago. Everyone on the committee, on both committees, has to be engaged in this process. And so the last thing I want to do is force a just, an ending decision, or even a substantive decision right tonight. So I think that's unacceptable, I think it's not a good way to build that collegiality and collaborative comfort. But we could clearly start, if that's the sentiment of the boards. Is there any other, I mean, what I want to do now, frankly? Oh, Mr. Fanch, that's good, because you're the next person I'd call on anyway. I want to go down the table and get other views.
I would support starting as early as possible. And I would also piggyback at the end that we end it as soon as possible without rushing through the process. And the reason why I think that it's important to identify an end date is that we're not only evaluating and determining whether we're going to continue to hire a superintendent, but it also has a ripple effect on the rest of the district. Other administrators are going to look at this and wonder, what are we doing prolonging the discussion of the superintendent? Staff is going to be looking at this in terms of what's the direction of the district if we wait until the superintendent's a lame duck. I think that's just not good for the district, it's not good for the staff, it's not good for the administrators. So I would hope that we could, not rush it, I'm not trying to say that, but I think we should try to microscope the beginning and end into a period of time that we avoid a lame duck situation.
Ms. Peddell?
I won't, I don't have anything to add. I agree with the sentiment from Mr. Fanch of wanting to start as soon as possible, and then keep the, pressure's not the right word, but keep sort of the pedal to the metal, so that we just keep going and don't sort of set this aside, and just keep sort of the sense of urgency to get it done when we can.
Ms. Spitzer?
I'd agree with what's been said before, if we should start early.
Okay, anyone? I'm going to wrap this up. Does any, yes?
I just want to add, and acknowledge Mr. Fanch and what he said, I do agree with what he has mentioned. And also, having a superintendent in a lame duck year is not a good thing to, for the district or for the superintendent either. If we begin as soon as possible, and I'm not saying next week or the next meeting, then we'll know, we should be able to put a timeline together, which allows the superintendent an opportunity to, if he chooses, to start looking elsewhere, if that's a need. So it gives everyone an opportunity to know where they stand, and so I think we should have a start and an end time.
Well, yeah, and it's funny, actually, because the reason I hedged initially when that start end time came up, was that since one of, to be candid, one of the outcomes of it can be that the superintendent can always decide to work elsewhere, and it could be as a matter of, I mean, it could be for any reason you'd want, meaning it wouldn't have to pertain to the negotiations, it could be extraneous to that, or even to just a life situation outside of it, you never know. And so the point is, any factor like that, my point, I guess my point is, as my, as Ms. Manino said earlier, is the timeline then becomes extremely artificial, because essentially, if that were the direction it went, it would end whenever that decision was made. You'd know, you'd be done, right, regardless of anything else? So what I was hearing is, I was hearing a sentiment to get started. I think, I mean, we heard a variety of sentiment around how fast to move. I think the next step of that would be finding, sending out the copy of the current contract to all the members again, just to make sure, I shouldn't say again, there are new members. Make sure you have it, look through it, and then we'll, I'll reconnoiter back with the chair of Union 26 to try to figure out how we can arrange our next step. As I said, what I would like is, I would like, we may even consider having MASC come in as a field assistant, to come in and do some training for the committee, so that we can, we can go into this the right way. And as I said, to me, it's extremely important to me, I respect everything the assistant superintendent said, and echoed some of the comments myself earlier, similar comments, but at the same time, I want to make sure all of you are entirely up to speed and feel completely comfortable with what we're doing. And I think we could do that in relatively short order. So I view that as sort of marching orders for September, frankly, to make sure we get there during September, just today being the time. Everyone good? Anyone have anything else they want to say? You don't? Okay. Then we're done with this.
All right. I would entertain a motion to adjourn Union 26?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of adjourned Union 26? All right, it's unanimous, we are adjourned.
Okay, so we're now back onto the region, region only. If anyone's leaving, have a good evening. The first item of business is approval of the minutes of August 29th, 2019. Hopefully you've had a chance to look at the minutes. If there are edits, people have, they want to... Yes, Ms. Fanch?
Do we need a motion to approve before we discuss this, or can we just...
No, we don't need, we don't have to have a motion, I'll take a motion if you want to.
And I would draw the attention of the committee to number four, Chair's Update, and the last paragraph, and the last sentence in the last paragraph. I'm not exactly sure how to correct that, but I don't understand what it says. I think there was an intent to convey some important information, but I don't think that's, there's much clarity there.
So the paragraph...
Where it says, if a decision hasn't been made, if they haven't made a decision, how they will, and thinking about the possibility of a failed assessment in budget, it just doesn't make any sense to me.
Yes?
I'd like to suggest that we re-watch the tape, because I agree that it doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, that actually, it's funny, actually, because it may seem self-involved to me, but this was a section... Yeah, that actually, it's funny actually, because um, it may seem self-involved to me, but this was a section I was wanting to revisit as well. Since some of these things I said, and I'm not sure I said them, is that, um, I guess, I guess one question I'd have is, is it possible for us to do this and bring the minutes forward again at our next meeting?
Yep.
Because that literally is the smartest way to do it, to just say, let's not mess around with it then. Yes? Mr. Dowell?
Moving on to another question, I think, can I?
Oh, sure.
Yeah. Um, in the um, discussion about Triple E, I believe, and I'll turn to Ms. Ardonia's, um, but I believe that the comment that Ms. Ardonia's made was about standing water as opposed to water activity.
So that's into the superintendent's update as well? Our superintendent's update, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So the same page actually, higher up on it.
Third paragraph from the top.
Yep.
Okay, any other, any other edits? Out of the minutes? Again, we're not gonna vote on it tonight. It's gonna come back as an item next one. I don't see any, so I'm gonna move on. Okay. Next item, committee announcements and public comment. Just as a note, this week we actually have some committee updates later on the agenda, so we don't need to have them during committee. Are there any announcements from members of the committee? Seeing none? Let's see what time it is here. It is now after seven, and this is a timed item for six fifty, um, so I feel good about the timing. Um, is there, I'm opening public comment. I frankly don't see anyone present to make public comments. Um, just also, I guess, for the benefit of people watching this on television later. So given the fact that it's fifteen minutes past the time the public comment was announced, I'm gonna close public comments and move on, because I'm assuming somebody would have been here by now. People would have been here by now if they wanted to make a comment. And, and just to be clear, since people can watch us at home, um, public comments are only one and obviously a very visible way to communicate with the school committee or frankly, the superintendent. We also have email addresses and other means and as well as written letters that can be sent to us. Um, and also if people do come to public comments and submit written comments, they're appended to the minutes. Um, so just to let people know, there's multiple ways to get in touch with us. Uh, next would be the superintendent's update.
Yep, and I'll be brief, partially because Ms. Cunningham and I are suffering from the same early fall cold. But um, I mentioned this orally at the last meeting, but now we have more formally that the Puerto Rico Day celebration is September twenty-third at twelve-thirty at Town Hall in Amherst. There will be both elementaries from both Amherst and Pelham, as well as regional students who participate. You all are welcome to come as well. Um, and just something I shared last time, but a little more detail this time, is we changed the timeline. It used to be in November. Um, and intentional quotes around discovery of Puerto Rico was the, the day that was historically celebrated. And so we've changed it to Grito de Lares, which is, celebrates an uprising against the colonial rule. So you could see the kind of hundred eighty degree shift in terms of the celebration philosophy. Uh, it also happens during Latino Heritage Month, which starts later this, this weekend, I suppose, and it goes to October fifteenth each year. So uh, we hope to see as many of you there as, as can do. And thanks to Dr. Guevara for uh, you know, my comment last year, like, we can't do this again on Discovery Day. And she's taking the ball and run with it. And she was at the town council last night, and the town council offered a proclamation and will be partnering on the event as well. I think many of them are gonna show up as well. So thanks to Dr. Guevara for both her planning and also for being, presenting last night to the town council. Mr. Jones here, thank you, Mr. Jones, for being present for part of the meeting tonight. There's a community kickoff day on Friday uh, this week at the high school. And I think this is the fourth or fifth year. I was trying to go back and remember that the high school has done this. And it's been incredibly successful in having an event early in the school year where actually classes stop. So there's a condensed timeframe of classes in the morning and the afternoon. Is there a variety of different activities, many of these organized by students as well as faculty, to make deeper connections and to kind of stop what, um, excuse me, uh, stop our normally daily actions and get to know one another and, and build that sense of connection that we know is critical for, for students and faculty members. So thank you for all your work, Mr. Jones. And I know Mr. Siddique has been the primary person, our assistant principal, um, organizing it. And he's got all the maps. I got an email today and I appreciate the work. Last Friday, along with other area superintendents, I met with um, the Commissioner, Jeffrey Riley. Um, I think the three take homes, uh, take homes he spoke clearly about are the need to increase our focus on teaching and learning. Um, not just, that's the second part, is reducing the focus just on standardized assessments. He described being a teacher in Maryland in the late nineties where their, their state assessment system was actually a collaborative assessment where no individual scores were offered, that students worked collaboratively together to, to do real-life tasks. And the school received a score in the district, but individual student focus wasn't the focus, because we, districts already had those assessments. Um, so that's, we're, we're far away from, we're far away from that vision, but he uses that as an example of how assessments can be married to good instruction, because he tries to, you want your assessments to look what, look like good instruction. And right now, that's misaligned in Massachusetts, in his opinion. And really to empower teachers to be creative and teaching to the standards. The standards um, uh, are out there, but there's a million ways to get there. And he wants to encourage and explore how to, how to remind teachers that they don't have to teach Page Fifty-Seven on Tuesday, that we're not a textbook state and we should be accessing the creative teachers we have in Massachusetts. Just a reminder that um, last year, uh, there was some advocacy that committee, I'm sorry, there was-
Mr. Foncha?
It's a question, Mr. Morris. In your judgment, does this um, phrase here, reducing focus on standardized test assessments, suggest that the, the commissioner is moving away from grad- uh, tests being a graduation requirement?
So someone asked that question, so you're not alone. Uh, one of my colleagues asked. Um, the challenging thing for him in that regard right now is that he does, he's not, he doesn't have the discretion to make that decision. That's uh, both a board decision that's been put into um, formal regulations. So um, he's walked into this. He did not answer the question, he answered the question the way that I described it. It wasn't a yes, no. Uh, but I, I, I think his thoughts in general are that standardized tests served a purpose. They brought, he described being a teacher in Boston before standardized tests and everyone doing whatever they chose. And there was an alignment and how negative that was for kids, particularly with kids with disabilities. But, you know, I think his phrase was, we've got as far as we can go with standardized assessments as they currently are. We now, we need to look much broader about the student experience and, and also he talked a lot about social emotional health, um, which is harder to assess based on a standardized tool.
Thank you.
Yep.
Someone?
So um, so you've met Commissioner Riley a few times now, and he's, he's a little more than a year into the job. And, you know, he's obviously working in a fairly conservative DESI leadership environment under Baker. Um, and I, he always talks a great talk whenever I've seen him. But he has some really disturbing um, privatization actions that he's participated in the last year. I just wondered if, if you get a sense from him whether he's actually someone we can work with? He always talks of like, I am, I'm a teacher, I come from being a teacher, and he's talked, he talks about reducing testing a lot. But I, I, I just can never tell whether he's, you know, being completely sincere in terms of trying to achieve practical results or not. I don't know if you had any sense after a year or so?
So uh, a couple of things I'd share briefly. One is that, uh, you're right, it's, he's come out a lot to Western Massachusetts. So I think um, I think as a Western Mass group of superintendents, we're, we're appreciative that he shows up. It's notably different from, especially people who've been in the role for a lot longer than me. Notably different historically from how commissioners have, have come. My personal experience to date with him is that he's a pretty straight shooter. He's given answers that weren't the popular answers when people challenged him on things. On the particular question of privatization, that has not come up in conversations I've had with him, so I can't speak to that directly. But um, it does, my interactions with him, um, he has seemed authentic in, in being candid, even if the answer is not gonna be the popular one in the room. So, um, that's all I can go on. Um, school choice is just a, a quick reminder, this was a topic that came up at the region last year. There was some advocacy that, um, based on a ruling in May last year. Our current elementary students are grandfathered in, um, but incoming students who are school choice students, um, who weren't grandfathered in, in other words, they weren't school choice, since as of school choice students uh, at the end of last year, will no longer have a, a highway or a pathway to the region other than reapplying for a school choice network. Last year, the advocacy was well-received by local legislators, but it was after most, the vast majority of the budget process. So it is something that may come back again, and, and I don't wanna repeat the cycle of thinking of this too late for legislators to, to consider it. So just wanted to put a bug in all of our mind, mind too collective years to come back to that, because it is a critical issue for all four towns. Uh, Director of Finance, actually, I'm gonna skip one. I'll do that last. Um, so adaptive physical education, again, another one about the high school. So just really exciting, um, so the PIP program is Pathway Independence. These are students with pretty significant disabilities. And, and a collaboration between the PE department and the special ed department. They've created, it's not a new course in terms of course catalog, and that's why it wouldn't come before you, um, like other ones in, in the winter. Uh, but a new program for an adaptive PE class for students in, in that program. That is um, something that's new. Um, so far, it's only been a week and a half at school, but it's gone really well. And I think, uh, what speaks so highly of all of our students is, um, students who are not part of the PIP program can apply for an ALPS, which is Alternative Learning Program, um, self-designed course to improve the access of students in the PIP program into the, and there's a waitlist now of students who want to be a part of supporting students in the PIP program within a physical education environment. Um, so kudos to um, the special ed staff there and the PE staff who with open arms uh, thought this was a great opportunity to expand their reach around access. And um, you know, it's just really exciting hearing the report from both sides today. I, I was able to talk to some of the special ed side as well as the PE side. And um, and it was really neat, and a really neat, neat came up, I mean, something I shared with the committee, certainly the convocation uh, for those of you who are there, was that Ms. Cunningham and I have scheduled um, what we're calling Make Us Better Meetings, just to get um, on the ground with any staff who wants to come, hear feedback. We had our first one of those at one of the elementary schools yesterday. Uh, but also inviting two staff members a week randomly chosen to have just a fifteen, twenty-minute conversation with me if they so choose about anything on their mind, and that's actually how this topic came up. Uh, it was just like, what, what's going well? And the first thing was, this is the neat, this is neat, you gotta come over and see this, you know? And um, so it was just really nice that kind of that mechanism was working. Finally, uh, in less positive news from my vantage point. Uh, you, last week you received an email from Finance Director Sean Mangano. He doesn't want me to do this. So uh, apologize Sean in advance, second time today. Um, but I really think it's worth us appreciating, uh, for me, I wanna appreciate all Sean has done for the district. Um, you think about many of the major initiatives that we've had over the last few years, and Sean's been connected to all of them. Um, so if we think about food service program and how big a shift for those of you who are here when we were in a, a model with a vendor and went in-house and before we had a food service director, as well as supporting uh, food service directors that have come since then, Sean has been critical. Um, we've had different assessment methods each year. Uh, your former colleague, uh, and Chair, Mr. Baptiste, you know, every year would have a, say, it's the Mangano method. And the Mangano, we're now on Mangano Method Four Point O, I think, or something along those lines that has worked effectively in challenging times with four towns, each with different needs and priorities um, and challenges fiscally to make that happen. Uh, but I think the thing that I wanna share, you know, both with you all as well as publicly, because you know, the newspapers can write a story, I never know what's gonna get in it, is the human connection. So um, you think of finance director, perhaps there's a negative stereotype connected to that about the level of time spent in front of spreadsheets versus time spent on people. And I think the unique thing about Sean is how many staff members feel connected to him. And I'm not talking about business office. I'm not talking about Doreen, myself, principals. Uh, how many general staff members feel like and have been invited, just come in and talk to me about whatever's, you know, on your mind or this concern. Uh, he's gathered, he's developed processes to gather feedback in the budget process from a wide variety of stakeholders. And I remember being in this room last year where we were doing a budget update, how's the budget looking? And the comfort level that our high school staff members and middle school staff members had to ask real questions and know that they'd get answers back that were digestible, that were understandable about something as complex as the regional budget. Um, that is really unique, in my opinion. So um, I'll stop here, um, because, you know, Mr. Mangano thankfully has agreed to continue to work until the end of the calendar year. But I didn't wanna not say something as that will be more public, I guess, in terms of newspaper tomorrow. Um, and I know you got the email on Friday.
Swan?
If I could add my two cents, um, I think for, speaking for Levert, on behalf of Levert, um, I think we all feel that Sean is one individual who, no matter what the issue is on the table, we can trust him to make the best effort to try to help us resolve it without too much arguing back and forth. Um, I think that's been particularly true for um, this ongoing assessment battle. Uh, but also during the discussions of regionalization. Uh, you were there to provide numbers that turned out to be accurate. Uh, good, sound numbers that helped us try to make a decision on that particular matter. You have left behind big shoes, and they're gonna be very difficult to fill, not only in terms of financial expertise, but also in terms of character and personality. I wish you well, but I'm sorry you're going.
Mr. Dowell?
I mean, I, I'm just so grateful for the body of work that Mr. Mangano has done for our region and our town. And the, the benefits that students have received as a result of his work just, just can't be, we don't have enough time to, to, to go through the list, um, because you know, it's, it's all a waterfall, right? We, we have such a complex relationship of, of, of regions and budgets, um, that he manages. Uh, and, and, you know, one little efficiency has such a trickle-down effect. And that creates financial opportunity for us to make a further investment in students. And so any, any, any time that, that a parent has had an art class that has, has, has impacted their child or a, a para educator that has made the difference for a child, that's, you can in some way tie that back to Mr. Mangano's work. Um, I remember when I first came on to school committee, and Sean does this great onboarding for school committee members, you know, where he walks you through. And school finance is not a simple, a simple thing for, uh, for anyone to understand. And he has such a clear, patient way of explaining pretty difficult concepts. And I, I really saw this on display the last year, um, when we were trying to advocate for a school budget, um, uh, changing uh, some, some state law with our state representatives. And uh, you know, very short timeframe of, of trying to understand uh, very convoluted data the DESI produces and how does that impact our district and what change should we advocate for? And the number of times that I relied on his expertise to, to make it uh, uh, clear so that, so that we could then engage, engage others. Um, you know, I, I won't go on except to say, you know, it, to say he will be greatly missed is an understatement. And our, our community should be very grateful that, for a time that we had him as our finance director.
Mr. Rones?
I just wanna take a moment also to thank uh, Mr. Mangano for all the incredible hard work that I personally have witnessed. Um, I think as superintendent said, uh, he hasn't just played the role of a finance director, but has also been, you know, integral to our union negotiations. Uh, we sat through many, many meetings, many meetings, uh, as we hammered out union contracts. And uh, I've just always been incredibly impressed with his ability to uh, carry information. There's never been a question, or very rarely a question that I have asked that Mr. Mangano did not know the answer to. Um, and that just shows, you know, a very bright mind, uh, but somebody who's just incredibly open-minded and willing to find the solutions, uh, you know, no matter how difficult the problem seemed. So I have personally really appreciated working alongside Mr. Mangano. And I agree, we have some very big shoes to fill, and I wish you the best of luck.
Mr. Reno?
Hi. Uh, I remember when I first came on board, I went to his office and he told me about the school committee finances. And he toggled spreadsheets and he just had thousands of spreadsheets he could toggle back and forth and stuff like that. But uh, he'd been very helpful to the Pelham School Committee, especially the School Options Committee that we had. He, he uh, mapped out various scenarios and was very patient. All I can say is Sean, please don't go, don't go, stay.
Okay. You haven't heard me yet. Uh, well, I was gonna say it during the chair's report, but since you wanna say something, I'll, I will say it now. Um, I, I agree with everything everyone just said, so uh, this may be a mixed bag compliment for you, I have no idea. But I worked in state government with the, the business manager CFOs of major line agencies and secretariats and with a lot of the line staff at the State Office of Administration and Finance. And I think you are as good as any person I ever worked with in any of those departments. And many of them were absolutely brilliant. Um, and so you've, you've been, we've been extraordinarily lucky to have you. And whatever you do next, uh, you're gonna be successful at. And I think the heart and care and diligence and good humor that you've brought to this work is not to be underestimated. But I just mean, it's, it's hard because this work, so many of the victories can feel pyrrhic. Like the idea that you look out and say, well, I guess our district's not on fire if we manage to solve the regional assessments, you know, doesn't sound like an amazing victory. But the reality is sometimes the most important thing you can do is to help keep the lights on, find ways to finance a project that looks unfinancable, and to make sure that the people who are doing the work and who are directly interacting- and who are directly interacting with children and staff every day and families can focus on what they're doing, instead of focusing on whether they're gonna get a pink slip, focus on whether things are gonna fall off, fall apart, focus on whether they have the materials to do the job. So you've been at the center of every good thing that's happened in this district, and you're extraordinary. I wish you were staying, but whatever you do next, you'll report back that it's gonna be great. And I wish you well.
So I haven't cried since The Lion King. I was like five, right, when Mufasa, you know, the scene, so you guys are pushing it. Thank you all. I'm gonna miss all of you, Superintendent Ms. Cunningham. And you have my promise, I'm gonna remain focused on the district until my last day, and I'll continue to help the district as best I can after that. So, thank you all.
Okay. So we're a little, for lots of understandable reasons, we're a little behind schedule. I want to try to move us along, just as the chair's updated a couple of things. One of which happened so quickly I could have forgotten about it, which was that there was a hearing last week for the Joint Committee on Education on a bill that would deal with or extend basically no food shaming, ending practices of food shaming statewide in school districts, being, you know, things like alternative lunch, calling out in some way, in a way that stigmatizes a student that they have a deficit in their account for foods. And our district has continued to be called out as a best practice. And so our representative, Mindy Dom, I shouldn't say our, ours in Amherst and Pelham. Sure, Representative Blais is doing a great job, she was very levered. But for those of us in Amherst and Pelham, our state representative was testifying on this bill and really wanted us to be able to offer our thoughts. Which I thought was great, both the advocacy as well as also the desire to be able to showcase the work of our district. So I very rapidly put together some testimony based on information from the already lauded finance director, Mr. Mangano, as well as the sort of the facts of what we did when we put it together, what the history was. And that testimony was delivered last week, so I hope that goes someplace. But I'll share, I'll share with you the testimony. I mean, luckily for you, since you lived it, you'll look at it and say, but that's just what we did. And I'm like, yeah, I know. No creative writing. Beyonce, that was wonderful. I'll also point out Amherst Media, which is still trying to work to get these cameras live, has said that Mr. Champagne and the IT department have been glory to work with and have been wonderful. So I think that's really cool, nice to hear, and thanks to them. And this is, this may sound orthogonal to the regional committee, but it actually isn't. Ms. McDonald and I spent a few hours, again, with Mr. Mangano at the, as part of the Joint Capital Planning Committee, which is a committee of the town of Amherst dealing with capital project issues. Earlier, when was that, last week? Last week. And I just think this committee and its constituent communities should be aware that there is a capital planning process that's being launched in probably a more organized way now to try to figure out how the town of Amherst is gonna pay for its capital needs across the board, including major big picture items like schools and libraries and fire departments. But that has a slowdown implication, probably, to what money is eventually available for things like athletic fields and recreational fields, let alone anything else that affects the region. So just, I'm saying this both so that we're keeping it in our minds, that even though typically we keep the different committees and districts hermetically sealed off from one another, the reality is, you know, if you got $1, it's only $1 no matter how many ways you slice it up, right? And so that means there's an implication to thinking about capital planning at the regional district as well, and thinking about how to constructively engage in those conversations, knowing that frankly, the price tag of some other capital items for the town of Amherst are so large that if you think of like a multi-year plan for multi-millions of dollars to redo our athletic fields, okay, that'll happen, I'm sure, right? Again, scarce dollars. So we're gonna have to, it's an item for a future agenda, but it's something that we're gonna have to engage on and then think about how and what the best way is, aside from the regional assessment of our operating budget. What's the best way to engage all four towns on a discussion of where we think we are planning for our capital needs? Anyways, I'm gonna leave it at that, because we have too much to go over. Subcommittee updates, are there any subcommittee updates? Yes, Ms. Donas?
So, the policy subcommittee met yesterday evening briefly and reviewed the policies related to roles and responsibilities of the school committee versus the superintendent. We don't have anything to show for that today. But we will be continuing work on that at our October meeting and hope to bring that back at that time. We, or after that time. The other thing that we worked on and talked about was the policies that need updating because of the new town charter in Amherst. There's several about organization and elections that just need to be updated. We have direction from the town manager on where he thinks some changes need to be made. And so we're in the process of drafting that and expect that we'll be reviewing that also at our October meeting and bringing it back to this full committee after that.
Right. Other subcommittee updates?
So just very briefly to update the committee on, there was earlier this year or last academic year, there had been a letter that had been submitted by Amherst Media with a request for this committee to consider, you know, opening up a discussion around the possibility of Amherst Media using part of the space here at the high school, part of the building, I should say, for their purposes, for the nonprofit organization. And so at the request of this committee, I was tasked with, as a liaison with Amherst Media, to, you know, be a part of those conversations. So I just wanted to report back that we have continued, we've met several times with Jim Lesko, the executive director of Amherst Media, and Superintendent and Principal Jones also, to talk about the physical space here, to just talk about some of the ideas. I think Amherst Media is proceeding very slowly and carefully, and, you know, rightfully so, understanding that we have, you know, also not made any decisions and that the district hasn't made any decisions, so this is all just exploratory. And this is a Plan B, quote unquote. So Amherst Media has purchased land in downtown Amherst, which they are pursuing at this point to see if they can build a new building there. If that does not pan out, if that does not work out, then this, you know, the option here at the high school would be something that we would discuss as a committee. So right now, just to be perfectly clear, we're just kind of keeping tabs in a conversation and, you know, engaging the executive director and the board of Amherst Media and the principal and staff here in answering any possible questions and just thinking through some potential scenarios. But I'll keep reporting back to this committee if things develop and as they change.
Great. Any other committee, subcommittee updates? Okay. We'll move on to new and continuing business. Item A, in which there is a potential vote that we can take this evening, is to offer feedback and vote if we choose to on the superintendent's goal for the year. So I'm hoping and assuming that the superintendent would introduce this topic.
Absolutely. So thank you for the feedback at the meeting a week and a half ago. And so what my process was, is I tallied where people, the things I heard most often from the different committee members. I looked at, you know, also the content of it, but I started with just a scatter plot of where did people prioritize, what did people prioritize, and how did they prioritize things? And then came up with a list of four goals for your consideration. Again, could be voted tonight, if there's different feedback, certainly could come back two weeks from now. The month of September would be, be great to have these voted for the end of the month, for sure. So I'll just read them aloud, and there's one thing I wanted to add onto the first goal in terms of a standard. The first goal is to sell, develop a conceptual framework on wellness that includes issues such as substance abuse, LGBT inclusion, and later start times, among others, and begin implementation of action planning along these dimensions. In this two standards, one thing, and I'm sorry it was a draft and didn't get on here, was adding standard 3B1, and I'll read that since you didn't have it beforehand, which is about sharing responsibility and to cater student support. And it's really about providing professional development, both for staff, but also for the community on issues of wellness. So I apologize that that was omitted from this version. Goal number two, or the draft goal number two, is complete the study of the viability and implications of moving sixth grade to the middle school and engage the larger community on the findings of the working group to gather additional feedback to inform a future decision or a decision on this topic. That, incidentally, was the most common response when I tallied up, just for what it's worth, the different responses of different committee members. Draft goal number three is to continue to diversify our staff through the refinement, excuse me, of our hiring process and provide ongoing professional development on diversity and equity, all staff members and administrators. And goal number four is engage the faculty and staff of the schools to complete the strategic planning process by adding initiatives that will achieve the objectives, begin implementation, evaluate effectiveness based on evidence, and make course corrections in the plan where needed. I think one thing to note is that three of these four are directly connected to goals that were prior, that they're, they're not the same, but they are continuing this key critical work in our district. Even the one that isn't, which is sixth grade to the middle school, was part of a larger capital expenditure two years ago to look at the infrastructure needs and now is continuing the work. So Mr. Donas is always reminding me in a really positive way that, you know, we're an organization that should build on future and on previous work, work that was done well and needs to be extended, and work in the wellness case where I think out of my goals last year, both in terms of the committee evaluated by my own self-evaluation, didn't necessarily get as far on that goal as some of the other ones last year. So I want to get back at it and make further progress. As I said, I'm open to any feedback.
So the questions are feedback right now?
Absolutely.
All right, I'm gonna just start over here and run down the line.
I like these goals. I think you did a good job summarizing the feedback from last time I was here at the meeting, but I saw the meeting. I like, so one thing I think is gonna be a challenge for, by the way, I also feel comfortable voting these tonight. I think number four is fairly ambitious in terms of its scope of initiating the objectives, begin implementation, evaluate the effectiveness, make course correction. That's a lot. So I think, I think scope, particularly in the evaluate effectiveness, you know, because you're gonna have to wait until things actually happen in order to evaluate whether what you've tried to do is effective. And, you know, you may just run into a time constraint with the year and whatnot. But I think that's one thing I'll watch for. And I really appreciate my other comment on number one, develop a conceptual framework. You know, when I first read through how you described this goal on wellness, my initial reaction was, well, it doesn't seem very well defined. But I think that's the nature of this topic of wellness. And I think I've, I've heard that in my own comments about wellness. I've heard that from comments from other committee members that this is a really important area to focus on. It's become increasingly important, and yet it's pretty hard to articulate exactly what the mainline thread is. So I really like the develop a conceptual framework. And I would look forward next year's goals, having those built on, on this.
Ms. Smithson?
Thank you. I also agree, this is, it's nice to see how you've added the goals, for lack of a better term. I would echo Mr. Dublin's comments that I originally was a little uneasy with just developing a conceptual framework, but I believe that if we're, the second part of that sentence is begin implementation of an action plan along these dimensions. So I wonder if it's, you know, before you can begin to implement the action plan, you actually need to go from concept, conceptual framework to action plan and then implement that action plan? So it almost feels like there's just a little bit of a step missing there. But maybe the conceptual framework is the action? I guess just some clarity on the terms there, because I think it'll be easier to evaluate whether or not you achieved the goal for, um, clear. Otherwise, one other comment, which is with engage the faculty and staff of, for engage the faculty and staff of the schools to complete the strategic planning process. Remind me, I felt like the strategic planning process originally involved folks outside of just the faculty and staff of the schools. And it's fine if, at this stage, now that we've got the broad outlines that we no longer continue to engage with those folks. But it was just a question whether or not there are people outside of faculty and staff who would be a part of that process.
Please. Yeah, so you're absolutely, to answer the assumption you had is correct, that it was a broad cross-section of stakeholders who participated in that process. And for us, you know, just hearing from and actually talk to Dr. Mossad today, who's been our facilitator and is gonna stay with us in a more limited role this fall as we, as we work on this. When we get to the initiative section, it's essentially saying, okay, we have these objectives and outcomes we want, and now we need staff to both, who are part of the process, but the more larger collective staff, to both understand where we're headed. And Mr. Jones and Mr. Smith led sessions on this, actually, at the beginning of the school year. And then figure out, how are we gonna get there, given the constraints? That we have 180 school days a year, and there's a lot of other things that staff are responsible for. So I think I could edit the language a little bit on that, but it is a more staff-directed role to figure out the, kind of, how to get from point A to point B, now that we've defined where point B is. That their feedback and input helps drive this part of the process, because they're the ones that are eventually gonna do the work. And so, but I think you're right, it's a valid critique, like how do we continue to engage broader set of stakeholders, even if the more directive process will be heavily staff-driven? So that's helpful feedback, thank you.
Ms. Donas?
I agree with every comment that's been stated so far, and I appreciate the way that you've pulled together the very diverse comments, I think that we had at our last meeting. And the only thing that I would say is on number three, the point about diversifying staff. I believe that most of the conversations that we've had around diversifying staff are actually related to equity in the district. And the diversification of staff is actually to benefit students ultimately, right, and to benefit our district. So I would like for, for that to be reflected in this goal some way. So perhaps it's continue to diversify our staff for the purposes of improving equity in the district. But I think it's important for the community to hear and to understand that it's not just about adding more people of color and different experiences and identities in staff, but that ultimately that's to benefit the kids that are, that are coming here.
Yeah. I think I could comment briefly on that and not to belabor, but I think that's true. I think a secondary goal, but an important one, is also to continue to improve the retention of staff of color as well and the experience of staff of color. So both things can be true, they're not competing, they're actually complementary. But I think from our vantage point, or my vantage point, I'll say that both of those things are really important and both perhaps can be called out, because I think it's, it's not just about the recruitment, the retention piece is also critical, as we've discussed. So I think being explicit about that makes sense.
Thank you.
Ms. Donas?
So I will echo a lot of what I've heard from, from everyone else here. I too struggle with understanding what is precisely meant by a conceptual framework. So if there's a way to build in some specificity of what that looks like, and I like the suggestion of maybe actually spelling out that it's an action plan, or maybe it's just changing the word includes to addresses these issues and then implementing the action plan. But something feels missing there. And I also agree on the comments about number four. And it's interesting, because that seems, feels like it's the big, one of the biggest goals, but only has one rubric that it addresses. So I don't know if that, if that is the case, I don't know the rubric very well. But I can't remember who called out the question about evaluating effectiveness if we're still identifying initiatives and just going to begin implementation. And so, and we talked, I think, the last time about this being a multi-year goal, that it's not necessarily, it is a strategic plan, so implementation's gonna begin, and we're gonna be evaluating effectiveness over the course of several years. So maybe phrasing that in a way that addresses that and reflects that it's a multi-year evaluation process.
Ms. Franch?
The Levert School Committee discussed the eight goals last night. And I can tell you that they were very impressed with the breadth of what those goals were. However, they expressed considerable concern over whether or not it's possible to fulfill all of the goals and objectives. So it's, it's good to see that you made some effort to kind of condense without losing the impact of the substance of the goals. So to be applauded for that. So to be applauded for that. I think it also, given the language of all four of these goals, it, it's related to what our discussion of the evaluation process. I see the language here as a bit vague and a bit ambiguous. You know, when, when are these goals intended to be achieved? And are we going to give you enough time and space to be able to do that? That kind of concerns me, and that's saying these aren't possible or noteworthy goal, it's just that I think that there's a very strong connection to the evaluation process. And I want to make sure that while we're looking at these goals, the evaluation is fair to you. Also, in number one, I would like very much to make the suggestion that you include the concept of mental health in that language. I think it's a bit more explicit, and it's in addition to the other concerns that you've articulated there. Excuse me. And I want to finally commend you on your effort to integrate and mold these into workable language. It's really hard to do that, especially with these sort of, I don't know, broad concepts, conceptual framework. But I think it's on the way to being able to come up with language that is easy to communicate to stakeholders, and I think that's really important. And finally, I, actually, I lied. One more. Number four. I, I worry about number four, because if you look, as I look at the strategic plan, it's enormous. It's, it's, well, it's enormous. And I just worry about us setting, or you setting, expectations too high, that you can only fall. And I hope together we can work to keep some sense of objectivity and realism as, as you proceed on these. I think that's really important. Otherwise, hats off. And we can find the, the rubric would contain the information as to how we would know if these are achieved, or when they're achieved.
Yeah, it's a descrip, it's a description of how you should be looking at it.
Right. Thank you.
Ms. Medina?
Well, the four goals are laudable, they're clear. What I look forward to is the preparation of the rubrics for assessment purposes, to see how you actually did achieve these four goals. I'm no fan of strategic planning, I went through 40 years of it at the university, but my experience here has been, it's been implemented nicely, the initiatives have been fair, they did involve various stakeholders, and we do have a strategic plan, which I think is admirable. I look forward to your assessment, what are the, I forget what you call it, I had it slip my mind.
Portfolio?
The list of accomplishments.
Artifacts.
Right before we do the evaluation.
Oh, I guess it is artifacts, not portfolio.
Art, the artifact, the artifact.
I don't know what's thinking of portfolio assessment.
Sounds nice, I like it better.
Well, I look forward to the artifacts document. That's it for you.
Yeah, all right, yeah, yes, please.
I'd like to comment on the goals too.
You may.
So when I look at goal number three, it talks about continuing to diversify our staff, and it continues on to look at the refinement of the hiring process. And I agree with Anastasia, with what she has mentioned. And I'd like to add that instead of looking at refining the hiring process, we look at identifying and addressing barriers. So the process was refined, yes, and of course, anything, everything can continually be refined. But if we can identify what is causing this to not occur as we're hoping it would, that should be something I think would be a, a better goal for the superintendent. And in addition to that, identifying the barriers, that we look at how we can grow our staff professionally, not just the, the professional development that we have, but have our teachers maybe go into an administrative program that we help support them. And just as we have the, the special ed program that we in district are providing, so that our teachers can get an add-on special ed license, that we look at other ways to grow our teachers and our staff.
Cool.
Thank you.
I don't know anything to add. I mean, honestly, I, I think, I, no, I mean, there's, all the comments collectively have been, I think, really helpful and really informative, and I basically agree with them. And including, so I just, I think that, and honestly, for, as substantively the general categories, I think makes enormous sense to me. I think also, as tough as the strategic plan is to do, we just started doing it, so like, it's got to be on here, right? There's not any choice. And, and I, I agree with what was said earlier, that you're not, we're not, you're not really, in my opinion, you're not really going to be using an evidence-based tool to evaluate the effectiveness of the strategic plan this year.
Right.
That's silly. I think actually even establishing an evidence-based tool, which you would want, which would be transparent, explicable to third parties and could be used going forward, would be completely awesome. I mean, by the way, good luck doing that, because like, that sounds hard enough, right? Especially something that corresponds with data we actually collect. And, and then similarly, I think the language on the front end, I don't want to go through everything people say, because like, when I said I agreed with it, I do agree with it. It's like the first one needs to be tightened up to figure out what actually it's doing. I love the edits to the diversity so-called goal, I think that's great. And then similarly, on the last one, I think you should just think about, think about literally what you're going to do this year, and whether you point to a multi-year or don't point to a multi-year. I mean, it reaches really about the next nine months. The only thing I'd say too is that we, we can't vote on it tonight, because we can't vote on a tool that we don't have the exact language, that nine months from now, we're going to be looking at the exact language, right? So we got to do that first. The good news is, I, what I did not hear, and members of the committee should squawk if they, if I'm wrong, I didn't hear anyone say that the general purpose and direction is wrong, which means essentially, when you get up tomorrow morning and you think about what you're doing that day, you can effectively start acting as if these are your goals, even though the specific language that characterizes them won't be voted on until next time. Makes sense? So now, please, anything else you want to add?
The last thing was what I was going to suggest, so we're aligned that, you know, I'll do some edits, we'll bring them back next time, but then I, what I heard was the same as what you just said, that general direction makes sense, cleaning up some language, clarifying, sending some of the goals, come back in two weeks.
Right, and another reason I'm saying, I wanted to make that final point that you just made too, is that for public, you know, tuning into the meeting and watching it, I don't want to get a sense that we're just cavalierly saying, you'll start thinking about how to implement this stuff, you know, in a month or whatever, or in two weeks or three weeks. It's like, no, you've been thinking about it already, and you're working on it already, and, you know. And it's actually why I like the assistant superintendent's edits, because you'll be doing that as a team anyway, so it's not like, it's not like, you know, you ask her tomorrow, so what did you think anyway? Oh, darn it, I wish I'd edited it. It was better to have the conversation. All right, so we're going to move on, and we're going to look forward to that coming up again in the future for a vote. School committee goals, calendar, and agenda items. I'll invite the vice chair to offer her comments, as well as superintendent. The only thing I'm going to say at the beginning is, the reason why the front end is better of this calendar is better defined in the backend, is that when you think of the conversation we were just having, a lot of what the superintendent's going to be doing is working through now, okay, how do I operationalize these things I said I was going to do, that the committee has agreed I should do? And so that has some implication for the front end of our calendar, but it has a huge implication for the back half of our calendar, where ideally there'd be reports out or engagement with the committee. And we, it'd be art, completely artificial if Ms. McDonald, you know, Dr. Morris and I had just sort of made up stuff and put them in blanks. So there, there, the, the back half is intentionally thin, because it's going to be filled out as we go. So I'll invite, I don't want to, you know, any other thoughts you have on the calendar.
No, other than just a, a high-level sort of overview of our, of how we got here, and we took the, the discussion that we had at our last meeting, and sort of where we thought we were, the, the discussion about the goals, and started to map that out, how that could look like, because part of our conversation had been, what can we feasibly, as, as an organization, the committee, but also the superintendent manage, given our, our, our meeting schedule and the fact that we really want to keep to our efficient two and a half hour meetings? So this was an attempt to sort of illustrate what that could look like, and, and as Mr. Nakajima pointed out, that we've really only, we're really only looking at the first three months here, and then the latter part of the, the year will start to get populated once we have more concrete goals and, and know what, what we're, what the timing and what that could look like. But it will follow and mimic some, a little bit of the process that we took for this first, first few months.
Ms. Medina?
The superintendent's update reminded me of a topic for further discussion. When do we, at the end of this meeting, do we propose topics to be added to this list? Or can we add them now?
I think you can add some of them now if you have.
The focus on standardized tests, what is the philosophy of the school? I don't know what it is. I've heard Amherst High downplays to focus on standard exams, but how do you downplay it?
Just as the chair of the evaluation subcommittee, I think we could, I don't see a reason why not, maybe somebody would want to advocate for one. We can't start adding into the end of the year, the evaluation.
Okay.
And the specifics of those things aren't, but we know we're going to have to do that at the end of the last, but I see.
Dr. Morris?
I can wait till Mr. Donas, I actually just want, yeah, I'll.
No, if you're responding to Ms. Spitzer, please, you can.
I wasn't. It wasn't.
Because of that.
So we, of course, just had a long conversation around our finance director, who was leaving at the end of the year. And so it makes me think that we have a budget process that is starting, you know, the beginning of the new year. And we also had a conversation about trying something new, which was sitting down and reviewing the budget in more detail and taking some time to do that. And so I'm just wondering if we can include that, you know, some of those timeline things in here, because they will affect the budget process this year in multiple ways. So, you know, I see that the FY21 budget projections in process for October 29th, I'm not sure if that's the sit-down review process that we had discussed at the retreat, or if this is something different. But in any case, I just want to make sure that we're highlighting that in some way in this calendar.
I just remembered another edit for the, for the minutes. When I went through the minutes for the last meeting, one of the things we said was that there was going to be a budget subcommittee that would meet and would go through this potential recommended process and timeline, and report it back to the, to our committee, to the total committee. And so what, the October 29th, and it could be moved up if it, could be moved up, but the October 29th budget item was not only sort of the initial budget discussion, but it was also an, an opportunity for that subcommittee to report back its recommendations to the full committee on how we could approach budget deliberations in our budget process for the year. I mean, we could move it in other, in other words, having explained that's what that means, if folks have another idea, we can do another idea. But that was, that was the intent of it. Yes, Ms. Rennis?
I think that makes sense for the subcommittee to come back, but I'm also thinking that, you know, it, it seems to me that we would probably need to add, and maybe I, I don't know what the committee's response to this would be, but I think it feels like we need to, might need to add an extra meeting or a special meeting specifically for this purpose that allows us to really dive into the budget for, you know, a couple of hours, right? So it's not just having it be an agenda item on another, you know, regular school committee meeting, but really have it, have it be its own thing.
Same question for you on that. My, my assumption was this, as we talked at the retreat, and there seemed to be a really favorable response to having a special meeting just about the budget, are, is your, so my assumption was that one of the recommendations that could be reported out by the subcommittee would actually be for there to be a day or a special meeting, and that that, but that the good thing about the report out would be that it would be then synced with all the other decisions and things we're going to be doing, so that instead of making a decision, we're going to have a special meeting, it's more a matter of, we're adopting a process, here's where that meeting fits with other things we're doing and other decisions we're making. So are you thinking we need to find time for that meeting, that special meeting now, or can we wait to have that report out?
I mean, you know, again, I think it's, it's up to the committee. From, from my perspective, I think it, because we're calendaring, it seems to make sense that if we want to fit in an extra meeting, you know, that we can, you know, work that with the committee while we're together in public and, and, you know, sort of ballpark and ex, you know, an estimated date or something, or at least a week, when we would want to aim for that. We also have, you know, superintendent and assistant superintendent here, so hopefully they would, and Mr. Mangano, at least for a few more months, could also help inform that thinking about timing, so.
So, Dr. Morris?
Could I make a, a non-content but more of a process suggestion?
Sure.
So I wonder if, at the end of many meetings, our past practice has been future planning, if we keep this as a living document, and this document actually comes in all the agenda packets, so that, like, I'm thinking back to the comment about superintendent evaluation timeline. I know we had a conversation in one of my other districts about whether to align or not align. In the past, they've all been roughly aligned with timeline, I think there's an interest at least to re-engage that conversation, so that as subcommittees, whether it's the finance subcommittee or superintendent evaluation subcommittee, that we're just constantly coming back and filling in, you know, and I don't expect Ms. Spitzer to give me an answer to that now, because I don't think, my understanding is you haven't, like, that conversation hasn't happened, but if we make it a more regular item, then not just looking at a meeting or two, that way we can kind of calendar more regularly, so we have kind of this map, and then we can come back and, and have this conversation each time, so as things come up from any subcommittee or any committee member, we can then plug in. Because invariably, things are going to come up that aren't on here, that are not predictable, like the thing I mentioned about school choice at the beginning. I mean, my hope would be at some point this fall, that's not on here explicitly, but that we get that. So I don't know if that's like a, a protocol that we could use, perhaps.
Well, I think, I think that makes sense, and I think we're going to need to do that anyways, because by essentially being, again, for the public who might not have been, might not have watched the last meeting yet, what they should be aware of is that we've been trying to be, as a committee, with the leadership of the, the administrative leadership of the district, more intentional and sort of organized about how we're doing our calendar, which helps with transparency, helps with the staff preparing for these meetings, helps us prepare and think, and engage the public. And also it respects the fact that we have the limited time, and how do we use that time well and most effectively? So for people who are aware out there, that's why if you're looking, it looks like we're picking out our, our old-fashioned use terminology, our day timers and figuring out when we're going to do different things, there's actually a much deeper purpose behind it, that simply, you know, organizing agendas, it's about really organizing our work more effectively. So I think in order to do that, that means we're engaging the committee, we're engaging the superintendent evaluation committee and others, they're going to have, the budget committee, they're going to have to report back. In order to do that effectively in a way that allows us to engage, it'll have to be on some level of living document. I mean, if there's any, I guess one thing I'd ask Mr. Mangano, and if he's given any thought to it, if there is a time that we think we would want to do a deeper dive on the budget, that could be calendared, we could, if we knew that now, it actually isn't a bad idea at all for, for Ms. Figaroa probably to try to figure out, like, what dates on the calendar could possibly work, right? Because that's going to be hard to do.
So I don't have a date in mind, but I would do want to update, so the budget and finance subcommittee is scheduled to meet on the 17th. And so we could come back, I think there's a meeting shortly thereafter on the 24th, we could come back at that meeting with the budget calendar more vetted, and then have a date for the committee to consider.
Yeah, why don't you do that?
Okay.
Unless the committee objects. Ms. Tranch?
Yeah, I, I might very well get stoned for starting off my comments with this, but I, I'm very hesitant to not, to cancel any meetings regardless, and that's because this is the only opportunity for me to find out what's going on in the schoolhouse. And so any, we had this discussion last night in Leverett, and I lost, because people don't like meetings. But for me, this is a window on, on your reports, et cetera, really provide that. So I like to have our meetings. Having said that, though, I noticed that this calendar is front-loaded, and purposely so, because other people's dates sort of dictate what we do here. And I'm wondering if, when I look at the second page, and particularly the third page, if we might not project some, what I consider to be important discussions. if we might not project some, what I consider to be important discussions for later on in the year, specifically your goals. If we could have a report on each of your goals, one goal a month, beginning in maybe late winter, early spring, that might be a good use of those times. And it might also coalesce with the evaluation process. But if we hear some detailed reports about where we were and where you are now, say in April, that might be a good way of using that time.
Just for the, one second, sorry, just for purposes of clarification, no one's suggesting taking away any meetings. In fact, the only thing we're trying to do is run the meetings we have more efficiently and more effectively. And in, in fact, actually, the only motion on the table, so to speak, I mean that metaphorically, not literally, was to add a meeting. So you're in luck. We're actually, we're only adding meetings.
I'm really excited about that.
And, and as I said earlier, I mean, I think, I think there's been a general consensus that where we can fill in items on here now, including about like the evaluation process, which would include review of goals, we'll try to do this as soon as feasible before the next, hopefully, for the next meeting, so that we'll, we'll, we'll make the staff at doing that. Assistant Trinidad?
I just wanted to add that the school equity task force did have some goals that I have been reporting on annually, and I'd like to add them if possible either to the May 26th or the June 9th meetings. And that would specifically be on discipline data and possibly the progress of the RJ course or program.
Do you want both meetings or one of them?
Well, we can split it, one in each.
Okay, cool. May 26th and June 9th, right? Anyone else? Because we have lots of other work today. I know it's just tonight, but I mean, alls we've done with this item is make more work for ourselves. All right, so we will, we will move forward. The next item on our agenda is the pool contract. It says here discussion, not vote, so I guess we're having a discussion.
Hello? So there's a little memo in your packet, I'll probably just go through it, summarize the, each question and the response. So this is a follow-up to our discussion at the last meeting, there were some questions and additional information that was requested. And so this is what we have so far. So the, so just in general, one thing that's changed since the last time we spoke is LSC, Leisure Services, has also come to us and asked for more pool time because of the Topman closing. So that in the last, I don't know, week, that happened. So when we get down to the calendar, you'll see that piece of it. But the first question that was asked last week was how much was Topman charging for the pool usage? It was very, very low. Apparently they came up with a rate when people first started using that pool and it was never increased, which may be why it's, the pool closed, I don't know. Not gonna make assumptions about that, but, but it was in the eight dollar per hour arena for one of the renters, but both LSC and the Tritons also use Topman, so they're both in that same boat with having to find alternative space. Does the swim team need the equipment that was proposed to be donated? So I haven't got a definitive no, but I'm getting the no vibe, that the, that we've survived without that equipment and the equipment's not super new, some of it's newer, but it's not super new, and that would we use it possibly, but it's not a need of the, of the swim team or the school district. Are there any scheduling conflicts so far for what's being requested? And the answer is yes. So when I factor in the new request from LSC with what's being requested from the Tritons, you can see the two calendars there, there are some conflicts on Tuesdays and Thursdays potentially, on the weekend potentially. So there are conflicts that we have to hammer out, and so I've reached out to the Tritons and LSC to schedule meetings so that we can at least, before even all decide on, you know, what we want to do, that we can have a, a calendar proposal that works. At the same time, I've got the tentative schedule from the swim team and our local, our high school swim team. We wouldn't have any conflicts during the week, because they practice before any of these times start, but when there are meets in our pool, that, then there would be a conflict, and that's always been the case. Both the Tritons and LSC know that when there's a swim meet, that they're not going to have the pool that day, because they go till eight o'clock. Does DPW have any concerns? So I reached out to them, I'm actually talking with Alan Snow tomorrow, who works for the DPW and has been the lead on maintaining the pool, so I'll get more information tomorrow, but we did reach out to them. And what do other pools charge? So we reached out to UMass and Hampshire College, haven't been able, haven't heard back from either one. I did talk to a neighboring town, which charged forty to sixty dollars per hour, depending on, I think, certain days of the week and certain peak times, but they also provided a lifeguard, so you have to factor in that there's a lifeguard costs in that rate. And so in general, the main thing we were gonna ask you tonight is if you're open to us coming up with some sort of tiered fee schedule for both LSC and the Tritons to factor in their transition out of Topman and, and using our pool more with the input from our facility department, other stakeholders like the DPW and the, and the high school swim team, and to bring back some sort of proposal to you hopefully at the next meeting for you to consider.
Assistant Trinidad?
So just briefly, one of the reasons we didn't bring that here and we didn't ask for a vote, some of this information came to us.
Like the LSC piece came, yeah.
Like yesterday. And, and so that's why you didn't get this too early in the packet and we didn't want to ask for a vote when you didn't have, we didn't have enough information that, that was critical. But the other piece, and I know Mr. Mangano said it, but I want to emphasize it, is that we're looking at significantly increased usage from both vendor, or both organizations, I should say. And so we want to get some feedback on looking at them, you know, perhaps equally and, and provide some context so that we, we can go back, taking your feedback into account, because the prior meeting was really just looking at the Tritons. And LSC is, well, it's not part of the region, they live in our building, you know, and it is a slightly different scenario, set of scenarios that we have now than what we had the last time we came to you. So I know we were hoping to get to a resolution place, but we didn't feel like we had new information and we didn't have complete information. So I just want to apologize for the delay, but it was, we didn't want to push you all to move faster than the information was coming.
And this is like the opposite problem from what we had like four years ago, nobody in our pool. Now, everybody wants to be in our pool. So it's a good problem to have, we just have to find a solution that doesn't, that sustains the pool into the future. We don't want to obviously put the pool at risk from overuse or anything like that.
Serena?
Two points. I think you said the disagreement, if there is one, the high school swim team needs to take priority over all of their uses.
Yep, that's explicit. So for both parties, we have what's called a license agreement that lays out all the responsibilities, and that's in both of them, or all of our license agreements, that high school teams have priority.
The second point, this is a tremendous increase in usage and exposure to liability. Does this have any insurance implications?
Yeah, so both parties have to provide certificates of liability insurance that are consistent with our coverages in the district, so they both, that we've had our insurance agent provide.
Your insurance policy will not go up?
It goes, they have to, we're insured as well, but they have to provide their own certificate of liability insurance, yeah.
Are there, are there questions or, or guidance to?
I guess just in terms of what you all are thinking about the ballpark of, of the fee schedule, you know, there's, I think, I mean, my feeling is you certainly want to cover your costs, you know, that's the kind of the bare minimum. And then, and then there's a difference between that and what a market rate might be that you could charge in, in a, in a regular scenario. But then there's the consideration that, you know, these are community organizations, these are town organizations, and so you might not want to philosophically charge top dollar, even though it might bring in top dollar. So I, I don't, have you, have you had any initial thoughts about, you know, is this a money-making opportunity? Is that how you're looking at it, or is this, you're just looking to break even and, and do, do a good deed?
You want to start?
Yeah, I'll start. So I think you're right and I agree with what you're framing. So I think, I have three thoughts. One is that we're not looking to make money, but we are looking to have a significant amount in the reserve, reserve fund, so that invariably if there's increased usage, have wear and tear, that we actually have funds to pay for the impact of that wear and tear. And it's not something that you can predict down to the penny, because you don't exactly know what it's going to look like. But we are looking to, if we're gonna have this much usage, we do want to have a fund that kind of, that proportionally increases over time, so that we maintain what is now a really, you know, high-quality pool, which wasn't always the case. We had a lot of problems, we put money into it. So that's, that's the first point I want to have. I think the second is that there's, it's hard to quantify fully. And the weekends, if there's no custodian there and we have to hire a custodian to be there, that's easy to quantify during the week. No matter how well these groups clean up for themselves, there still is an additional load on custodians. So even if they're already working and we don't, we're not hiring additional custodial support, it has an impact on, you know, the operation of the building. So that's where I think we struggle with philosophically, with how to quantify that, because it's not like we're hiring someone else, except that person now has more responsibilities and we don't really need another full person. But how do you actually make, what's the calculus of that is a challenge? So I think what me and Mr. Mangano, and you could, you know, jump in, Sean, I'm sorry, I'm being long-winded, our thinking is can we make a, you know, a rate that is defensible, that adds to the balance that we have, but also can provide us the necessary support so that our school, our middle school is well-maintained in addition to the pool, and we're being fair to our, you know, community organizations? And that's at least our philosophy of how to make this all work, to, to do, look at so much usage, we may not want to keep the thirty dollars per hour, but we don't want to go too low where we're actually having a negative impact on the school.
Yeah, and I'll just build off, yeah, your first point. So when we didn't have anybody in the pool, the only reason we were able to sustain the pool and provide all the chemicals and keep it going without any impact on the general fund was because we had such a large reserve from prior decades when the pool was heavily used, we were able to use that. That was really the impetus for why we started getting people back in the pool, because it got low. So I think we do want to build that reserve, a, for capital improvements, you know, we just recently, we cleaned all the grout and kind of repolished everything, we bought a new heating system. Those things have to be done every, you know, five to 10 years, at least on the, the grout piece of it. So I think that's, again, we want to build that pool reserve for those types of things so that we can keep it going long to the future, because the pool's as old as the building, I think. So it's, you know, talking sixty-year-old pool, large pool, so.
Any other, any other questions or comments?
I understand that tonight's conversation is about the pool, but I want us to also be open and keep in mind that there are other agencies that have been looking to use our facilities, and I would like the conversation to open more widely to those other agencies that work with our students, because they've asked the question about facilities use. So whatever our decision may be about the pool, I want us to expand it and expand our thoughts to thinking about the other facilities too.
Spitzer?
So this is less about financing, but more about the idea of having this calendar. So it seems like we want to make sure we're building in time when people can come and go. I'm just thinking if we book it too closely so that the Tritons are leaving at the same time as small children who are doing lessons, like, I'm sure somebody's thinking about this, but the, the flow of people in and out in the populate, different populations who are affiliated with each of these groups, it seems like we should make sure that we don't maximize to the point where we're getting overcrowded in the locker rooms and things like that.
They currently, even this past year, they sort of had that tight transition, but I haven't heard any issues from LSC, and LSC's first, I haven't heard any issues with like, kind of being overwhelmed with people coming in, but I'll check when I meet with them, just make sure this.
Yeah, just something I was thinking about, if you're in there with small children.
Yeah, especially the lock, the locker room transitions and things like that, yeah.
So I guess my, my comment would just be that I like the fact that you raised the question of how do you build in, what's the, actually, I think I'll, I'll take, this is the superintendent's frame first, what's our philosophy towards using, opening our facilities and how do we think about pricing in that, in that regard? And I think that the idea that it has to be budget-neutral in terms of covering costs, I think, including some wiggle room, for the idea that you can't completely anticipate, you know, the need for custodians or whatever it is, or cleaning up, you know, whatever the situation is, the reality is we know there's got to be some sort of fudge factor in, in the number that allows for the possibility that things over time are going to even out at costs at a slightly higher level than you anticipated initially. And if that's not true, you can adjust after a year or two and go down, go downwards. One. Two, I think the idea that we would also build in some conception around replenishment of our capital or of our facilities into the pricing also makes enormous sense. And I'm saying this precisely because of what Ms. Cunningham was saying, that you can, you can, you can now port those, those concepts from this discussion into any other discussion you're doing. The, the challenge is getting good numbers and figuring out what's, what's a reliable basis, knowing that if you can always, if you charge too much, you can always scale back. If you charge too little, it could be really challenging to increase prices once you get the sticker price in there. And so when I'm, when I'm thinking about it in terms of a future item, I'm thinking about it in those terms. What, is there, is there a statement, and I guess this is actually like this Mr. Demlin said earlier, is there in fact a philosophy around how we're opening these facilities up and making them available from, from that perspective? And then, you know, show the numbers that can show that we're being conservative in how we're doing the pricing? Once, once we've accomplished those objectives, because we're a public facility and we're, this is a public, we're trying to offer people and participate in, the idea that I'm a nonprofit, I guess I distinguish that from a for-profit, but the idea that a nonprofit can benefit from it at a reasonable, at a reasonable price found, price point that's discounted off of the private sector, doesn't bother me at all, as long as you can assure taxpayers and your neighbors that we're not actually unintentionally subsidizing the activity without expressly making the decision to do so in some way. Assistant Serena?
I agree with what you said, but in the entire discussion, we should remember, this is a school first and a community center second, there, second. It's not a community center, it's a school.
Yeah, I don't think anyone was actually contradicting your, your observation earlier. What I, what I heard.
You had a question that there are a lot of organizations interested in using our facilities, this can't be a community center.
Yeah, I mean, I think one of the things that I've been in touch with Mike and our facility director Rupert about is that aside from the pool, which is sort of a emergency thing that popped up because of the additional requests, we do want to review our facility use procedures. Both the, the guidelines are on the website that have a fee schedule, but that definitely needs to be reviewed and updated. And then there's some like procedures online as well, which aren't policy, but they're just some procedures that support that sort of guidelines. So both of those need to be reviewed sort of with what everybody said in addition to the, the pool. And the pool needs to be included, because the pool is not even part of that right now, the pool is separate from that.
We gotta move on.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean that toward you.
No, no. I thank all of you.
I appreciate your time.
Okay.
I need a two-minute recess if it's okay. Is that right?
I wasn't thinking, I wasn't thinking.
Sean? Yeah, I got it. No. Why, when you said that, I was going back to that conversation.
Yeah.
But you're right, it makes a difference in some other programs.
Yeah, they use a lot of our.
How many courses are you taking this semester?
So I'm taking like four.
That's a heavy load.
Yeah, it does for guys, usually they take about like two or three. I'm just taking a load to get ahead on the year.
Okay, gotcha.
So I'm doing some review stuff with food mechanics right now.
What building are you all in?
So I basically live in Marston Hall.
Which one's that?
It's in Engineering Club next to Marcus.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Sorry, I, I missed you over there. I was actually really wanting to conclude that item so I could take my recess, and so, so it was fixated on getting the committee to speak and, and wrap up.
I didn't take offense.
I was, I was really at tunnel vision.
I was gonna say, if you didn't notice me, I was going to say something like.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I decided not to turn over the chair to Ms. McDonald for the final item on the agenda. And I decided not to turn over the chair to Ms. McDonald for the final item on the agenda. I thought I could just do that and then I could come back, I could go uptown and get some ice cream and come back and see how things were going. But I decided not to, I thought.
Bart's still open. Sun's still up, he'd be going there right there with you. Every time you give him the option, he'll be like, Bart's open, you know?
You ever been to Flavors of Cook Farm?
Of course, yeah.
It's so good, that's really good ice cream, there's a, there's a, um, what road is that anyways?
Maple, isn't it?
Maple? Yeah, um going towards like Atkins and towards, you know, um the mountain range.
If you're a target, you go off the road that's behind target, um.
Yeah, you just keep going, keep like go through two, um, two stop signs. You'll, and you'll, you'll, it'll happen is you'll start driving through a working dairy farm. In which there's like barns and cows on both sides of the road, and then there's like a little, you know, little stand that you can, they pull into. And if you want to like stare at the cows, you can stare at the cows, including little baby calves and stuff. Um but if you go inside, they sell uh milk, butter, eggs, and homemade ice cream that's absolutely spectacular. It's one of the best ice creams. And they have apparently sandwiches and stoops and stuff like that too.
Mac and cheese.
I myself am a.
My kids called it the cow place.
Yeah, exactly. Like how often do you see cows and stuff like that, it's totally awesome.
And dad was a dairy.
Yeah. I think that's awesome.
It was such a hard job.
Oh, I'm sure, well. It's funny, actually, my mom grew up on a working farm and she has, she loves farms, but she has a different perspective on sort of the, the public charm of them. Like, don't get her on chickens. Mr. Medina? We're gonna, no, it's okay, I was just gonna say we're gonna get started.
We'll talk.
Uh if Amherst Media is ready, uh we're gonna resume. So I think that's, I'm gonna take that as a yes. Um so we're back from our recess, the Amherst Pelham Regional School Committee. Uh and the next item on our agenda is uh item D, review of policies related to harassment. And as this is introduced as review current external policies that determine that the policy subcommittee should revise current policies related to harassment and protected groups. This is a discussion, but one of the outcomes of the discussion could be, if the committee is interested, is that this topic could be referred to the policy subcommittee um for action. And um, you know, just as, as an introduction to this topic, um and, and there may be a broader um framework that the superintendent, uh or the assistant superintendent wanna place on this. But I would, I would just say that one of the gaps that we, has become apparent um to a few of us is that um we have existing policies on uh hara- variety of forms of harassment. When it comes to students engaging with other students, staff engaging with students and staff engaging with each other. Um but we don't have, uh not limited to this, we don't actually have any approach or policy related to how the public engages uh with either, with the staff and the, the school, the school community broadly speaking. And whether either onsite or electronically or otherwise. And um the superintendent, I'm sure will talk about this further, but there was a particularly significant um issue that came up in the Pelham School District last year, right? Last year, uh in which this topic again about how to, how do we even understand and how do we approach supporting staff? Um to have an envi- a workplace that feels safe, comfortable, supportive? If you look at the value statement that was in your packet from our district, my guess is everyone, I'm hoping, but I'd guess, everyone agrees with all the va- value statements in there that are very positive ones. Um and they're talking about going beyond sort of a baseline of you're sort of minimally safe to, it's actually nurturing, supportive and uh community that reflects positive values more broadly. And so that became an issue in Pelham. I think for um leadership in the district, individual staff members as well as also our school committee, there's also, it is particularly becomes relevant when you're talking about the superintendent, other public-facing officials in this, in this, in the school committee. There's an acute challenge around how to balance the need and desire to receive feedback from the public and get. The reality is, if people, somebody comes to us and they have a concern over how either an individual uh within the employee of the district, including the superintendent. Um or us as a committee setting budgets and other decisions, uh they're likely, if they come up to us, um pro- and screw up the courage to stand at the microphone, to um be in a position where they have very strong opinions about what they're standing. So the reality is, whether it's via email or, or in person, there, there's no way around the fact that if you're in a public-facing job, um there's going to be a lot of criticism. So it's gonna be expressed in ways that people might wish in hindsight they hadn't said. And that's the nature of the business, because the reality is, and there's obviously lo- I mean, I'm not an attorney, but we've, we've looked at this enough, I think other people have looked at this enough to know that in, in the public realm in general, um there's, there's a built-in structural legal bias in favor of speech and in favor of the ability of people to redress government, to say what's on their mind and to speak. And so that's well established, and I think a lot of what we've been trying to do the last few years, at least while I've been here, I'm not saying not before, but I'm just saying, I've only been here three years. Uh and during those three years, I think we've tried to set a tone of transparency, uh we've tried to think of different modalities of how to engage the public and listen. Um and so we've tried to walk the walk, we can always improve doing that. And I'm just, I'm framing that out as a principle because when we engage in the discussion around how we engage the public and what policies or rules are set up around it. The natural counterpoint to um a concern over some of the speech or some of the behavior or actions that might negatively affect staff or the leadership, including the school committee, is, is going to be saying, well, you know, how do you, how do you know that what you're doing shouldn't be just purely protected speech? And you'd never, and as we all know, you never get into situations where you restrain speech. As a matter of fact, the Superior Court decision regarding the Natick School Committee um last year said, um in fact, someone can get up and come before you in public comment and say all sorts of things. Some of which could end up being actionable on the part who says it, but you don't, you can't restrain the speech in advance, you can't silence the speech in advance. So I say that, I say that as a framework because the alternative circumstance can I think also confront yourself, can confront us. And I think in fact, over the last year, has confronted us as a school district where um you have patterned behavior of speech and recurrent speech uh and other actions coming before um both line staff, supervisory staff, administrators, senior leadership in the district, uh and uh members of the school committee that um s- seems to push the limits of what should be considered um fair and reasonable, not a speech per se. But as a pattern of behavior that um conceivably could, could constitute harassment or bullying. I say that because if you look in our packet, we had a number of things in here around that of other states that have, that adopted policies uh on the general public that talk about defining harassment and bullying. And so the reason why this topic is ripe and coming up is because of the fact that we just, we realized and sort of wrestled with, and I'm just speaking for myself, I wrestled with this, this past summer. How do you provide an environment in which the staff is obviously held accountable, obviously responsible to the public, obviously is accountable to their peers? But at the same time, when they show up to the office, when they open their email, when they do their job, they, they feel like the condition of their appointment is naturally conducive to a positive environment that feels progressive in the sense of professionally developmental and supportive. And where criticism is organized in a way that's designed to elicit the best organizational outcome and outcomes for families and students and staff, right? And the truth is, we don't have a policy or tool that allows us to guide us in figuring out how to do that. And so the discussion that came to us here is figuring out how to do that. Now, everything I just said, I'll be honest with you, has been said hopefully fairly, hopefully reasonably, but also in a fairly bloodless um language. Part of that is because of this balance point that we're talking about, where we have to recognize our responsibility to accept criticism and understand that probably the trips, meaning the, the, the tripwire of where you go from um acceptable public comment to something that we can consider abusive. Um the bias is always gonna be in favor of speech, the bias is always gonna be in favor of free speech. And so figuring out how to do that is hard on the one hand. On the other hand, and I'm just gonna say this once, um i- if you looked at the totality of, of the emails just in volume that we've been getting. But also the ways in which the language of those emails um desperately um target a variety of individuals from, again, line staff to supervisors to administrators, the senior administrators, school committee members. It, there is every reason for people who are colleagues or who work for us as a school committee to feel insecure, angry, anxious. Perhaps even to the point where they might consider leaving and going to another district to work or leaving the employ. Those risks are real and they exist and they're a fact. They're not, that's not even open to debate, that what I just said is a fact. And so um we don't have the tools right now to effectively deal with this. And we've gotta figure out whether we as a committee wanna engage and finding those tools, knowing that if we develop such a policy and understood what the flow-down implications of the process and any remedy that would exist within the tools, that then they would be implemented on a going-forward basis. So I'm gonna leave it at, I know that was like a ten-minute introduction, it's still a fifteen-minute introduction, but I'm still gonna leave it at that. And um open up for the superintendent and the assistant superintendent to offer their framing and other thoughts. Um but honestly, because I know whether it's you or your colleagues, that you, you're living this, I thought it was important for me to say first that at least as chair of the committee, I'm, I'm taking this very seriously and wanna work collaboratively in the framework that I just, just expressed to be very supportive of the staff and colleagues, um while also keeping true to those pillars of public engagement and openness that we describe as being our values. Please.
So um just a little framing, as, as the chair said, this is an issue that came in public comment last year in Pelham, I'm looking at Mr. Medina cuz um he was at that meeting. And uh we heard from some staff members based on um dialogue between uh community members of the public, that, that in, in that instance wasn't actually directed at them, at staff members. But for them, what they shared is it created a work environment that, that didn't feel safe and, and they weren't referring to physical safety, and to be really clear. But that they expect to go to work and not hear uh the language they heard that day, um it impacted them greatly. Mr. Medina, is that a fair summary of? And so the Pelham School Committee uh requested that I meet with the staff members and, and I did so. And uh one of the um, and I thought the principal, and I said this in Pelham and I'll say it here, I thought the principal responded very appropriately uh and, and met that balance that, that you described. And what I think was disquieting for, for us was that when we went to policy, we didn't actually have a place like to stand on actually to make a judgment. So we did the thing that we felt like was the right thing to support staff members, um I think it was done sensitively in terms of follow-up. Um but i- i- if challenged, there wasn't a great place to go to say, oh, actually, this policy was violated, we didn't, we didn't have that, it's not in the, in the, in the book. So Pelham School Committee talked about this last week, they are choosing to move forward, you know, and, and perhaps they'll collaborate if this committee wants to, perhaps not. But one of the things the chair of the Pelham School Committee and I talked about is um what are other places do on this issue? Amherst is not, we, we joke about being unique and maybe there's some truth to that in some ways, but um this issue is a broader issue uh of stat- workplace safety. And if you read the paper this morning, uh not our local rep, but a local rep in, in the general area is proposing language at the State House actually around it. And I think it includes language um uh from Representative Sabadosa um to how to address language, uh to prevent verbal or physical conduct that quote creates an intimidating hostile offensive or other, otherwise untenable workplace environment. And so I think just broadening the scope, I think is helpful cuz it's not, yes, you know, we may have an acute issue uh or acute issues uh in multiple districts. But I think the broader conversation about workplace safety and workplace environment is, is really where, for me, is the most important thing. And again, the purpose of this agenda topic is to raise an issue that is currently affecting staff members and discuss whether this matter should be referred or how it should be referred to the policy subcommittee. Um not to come up with a policy in itself, but the Pelham uh School Committee Chair and I uh reached out to um, actually on her behalf, I did, to the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. Just to say, you know, what are other places doing? And uh she put out a, a feeler actually to a national, her national network of school committees and school boards associations. And so it's in the packet, which was in the Pelham packet, as well as a couple of other examples of states, how they approach this issue with their model policies. And I think um, I think in particular, I think the most instructive one is the, the last one in your packet, that's N C S B A, which is North Carolina School Boards Association. And if people wanna actually like, I'd like to read from there more than actually talk about um other things to talk about cuz I think the chair wrote much of that. So if you're, if you look at page two of ten, there, there's a footnote at the, at the bottom, and that's actually the, the crux of the matter for me. And uh essentially what it says is that a policy prohibiting hu- harassment bullying is required. And, and so that's really in that section one above, so if you look at harassment bullying two A one, places a student or school employee in actual or reasonable fear of harm to his or her person or damage to his or her property. In the Pelham situation, that was actually the core principle of, that wasn't met. And it was really unsatisfactory to staff when I met with them, who, again, incredibly professional in how they approached this, that, that is essentially our standard in talking to our legal counsel right now, based on our policy. Is that people have to, you know, if that got tripped, there would be other actions that me as a superintendent, the principal could take. And so the interesting thing about the footnote is the second sentence to me, this policy adopts a broader definition of harassment bullying than is required by their general, their general laws, which are very similar to Massachusetts. Which does not include conduct that creates a hostile environment by adversely altering the conditions of an employee's employment. And then they go on from there. And I think, so the key question for, for the committee to consider is kind of on that first tier of if a school employee feels physically unsafe. While it's not in policy, we have Mass General Law which supersedes policy and, you know, we have action steps that we can take. It's really about that second piece about the hostile work environment and whether the committee would like to engage on what that looks like to, to understand and actually, you know, walk in and, and live the tension between how do you define that, uh what, um how do you do that without constraining free speech in ways that would be inconsistent with our philosophy? We ourselves, administrators, uh both ourselves and for our staff, we expect, um and it's not just like a hope, it's an expect, that all staff members are open to critical feedback as part of our continuous improvement process. So um I think we have lots of tangible examples, both at the committee level, but also at the administrative level, of ideas that came from other places as critiques and have been now integrated into district practice. We are better off for it. You know, we think about, we talked about the hiring process earlier, there's definitely critiques um about our hiring process for many years that weren't acute to one year. We took that feedback and under Ms. Cunningham's leadership, we have significantly adjusted the kind of um cert, the interview and search process. Um and that's what we do, and that's the expectation we have for all staff. And so how to balance taking authentic critiques that may be framed in ways that are not how one would love them to be framed? I think we have to make sure that stays clear, pure and part of our operations, not just for all the free speech reasons, legal reasons, but that's actually how we get better, right? We can't only listen to feedback that's framed the way we want it to be framed. At the same time, when we get into bullying and harassing behaviors, um and particularly bias-based behaviors um and comments, that's where the workplace safety and the harassment and bullying come in. And so that's, that's a, um, it's an easy distinction to uh feel, it's a harder one to identify in, in real life with real scenarios. Uh but I think that's, this, this footnote for me is the crux of the matter is, do we wanna, uh does the committee rather wanna engage in how to do that? Does it wanna uh look at uh what are models out there like the ones here or other places? Um and extend, you know, beyond physical safety of employees, as well as perhaps school committee members, to a broader definition of, of what that means. And I was gonna say other things, but I think that's actually where I'll leave it, I think. Mr. Rec, you must have said a number of things.
I think you said a lot, that's very important to have been said. I look at his, the superintendent's goal number three, that talks about diversifying and retaining, once we correct it or add to it, retaining staff. And when we look at the things that. And when we look at the things that are being written or stated about the staff, the morale has been compromised, right? And I'm not saying, as, as um Dr. Morris mentioned, that we should always hear great things and how well we're doing. And we should receive that criticism. And there's a point and a limit to how things should be stated, right? So it's encouraging for me to hear that we're thinking and looking at the possibility of um a policy on this topic. And I know that if and when this does occur, it then can impact staff morale, retention and all the other things that we talked about, especially with identifying why people are leaving the district. And then I want us to even go a further step and talk about, okay, if there's a violation of our policy, what the result would actually look like. So I don't want us to just put something on paper and say, we have this document that says, don't do this. But I want some tangibles for our staff to say, if there is something that takes place, here's what the district or the school committee has said that they will do as a result of that.
It's int- it's interesting. I gotta, uh, I apologize, I'll throw it to everyone else on the committee in a second. But it was interesting, when I was reading through the, the examples that were put in the packet, one of the first things that struck me was whether or not there was any articulation of what the potential either remedies or sanctions or other sorts of, or, or even um, you know, like requiring mediation, whatever it is, it could be any number of kinds of responses. The idea that, that if you don't, if you can't articulate what the sort of remedy response or corrective action is, then I mean, what's good, what good is the policy? And I think particularly in a situation like this, where you're talking about something where I've already beaten, like I couldn't say more times than I already did, that we're trying to find an appropriate balance where we're respecting free speech and cri- pop, you know, cri- uh constructive criticism, or even non-construc- criticism, just criticism. Um, with, with this question about what the workplace environment is like and how to support um staff and the leadership, that if you, if you don't take that next step of translating it into what the remedies are, then it becomes meaningless, cause it means whenever you actually try to use the policy, everyone's first thought is, oh my God, we've never given any thought to how to implement this. And we don't, and here's the key point, we don't know what's legal, what's best practice, what's legal, who should be the responsible parties, how do you keep it conf- I mean, I know we have some, a lot of risk to keeping things confidential, but I'm just saying, because we're talking about something that would involve theoretically a member of the public who's not subject to the normal sort of personnel and HR rules, um, how do you do that? How do you do that appropriately, right? If you don't think about those things in advance, and more importantly, you don't think about them when you're not thinking about like a particular case in Pelham, right? I mean, not to pick on Pelham, but you, you can't be doing it framing out a particular instance or circumstance. It needs to be, it needs to be, it needs to be something that could apply in any situation, even if it allows for continuous improvement and learning. Um, so I'm sorry to throw all that out, but I've been, I, I agree wholeheartedly, and that even means if the, in my view, if the policy subcommittee wanted, if the committee wanted to engage in this, the policy subcommittee wanted to engage in this, I think there needs to be some dialogue between the committee and the administration while we're developing it, so we can actually practically put forward not just the policy, but also what's a view towards implementation steps that come almost together, at least in some framing. So I'm, this is like a big, I mean, I know the committee knows this, and you've been getting emails too. This is like a really big deal topic. So I apologize I'm going off on it like this, but this is like a really, really important topic for our district uh to, to confront and deal with in a way that's really constructive, but is also meaningful. Is there any of this?
Yeah, I think um I, I think that given the, the severity of the situation that you've described, um, and I think that, you know, what the superintendent has described with the, the issue in Pelham last year, that this topic rises to the level of attention for the entire committee. Um, I think, you know, personally, I, I would appreciate probably having the policies, policy subcommittee take a close look at some language uh and making some recommendations to the full committee. But I, I think that this requires input from, you know, assistant superintendent, superintendent, uh various administrators, school committee members. You know, everyone seated around this table has been impacted in one way or another. Um, and will continue to be. Um, so I think that, you know, having a, a process that is clear and transparent, that involves, you know, the full committee input uh and that is done in public is the best approach for something like this. Um, you know, I think someone mentioned before about the potential loss of staff. That is one hundred percent something that I'm constantly thinking about. Uh, you know, the description here and this language from the North Carolina School Board is incredible language, right? Cause it talks about that hostile environment. Uh, and it talks about how, you know, uh basically the harassment or the bullying, cause really that's what we're talking about, that the conduct is objectively severe or pervasive enough that a reasonable person would agree that it is harassment or bullying. And that signals to me the degree of engagement um that has been happening, right? There's, you know, it's, it's anyone, any reasonable person who would look at the volume of, of messages, the, you know, uh, the posts that have been posted online. There's a lot of, you know, a lot of, of things that go above and beyond the usual kinds of comments or criticisms that we, we receive. And I can say, having sat on this committee now for three and a half years, that, you know, I've, I've heard from the community when they're angry about things, right? And, and that's a normal part, and I actually invite that, and we'll sit down and have conversations with people. Um, but when you are receiving a, you know, a level of, of, of rage really, uh in, you know, messages that are being directed uh that we've seen directed to staff and to administrators and to school committee members, there's no degree of conversation or uh reasonable, you know, dialogue that can be expected with something like that. And so I'm hopeful that, you know, a policy that we can put together can help address that degree of, of severity and acknowledging that we are all here because we believe in free speech and we think that it's important. And we have never taken any steps to try to curtail or stop uh, you know, people from expressing their opinions and their viewpoints on the way that we run our district. Uh, at the same time, there is a level of responsibility that is required when engaging, you know, other human beings that we all expect of each other. And so I hope that any policy that we can come up with reflects that and helps put an end to the hostility and, you know, that, that degree of severity that we're describing right now.
So I, I would agree with, with all of the, the comments from Mr. Donas. Um, my sort of way I, I try and frame this is that, you know, if we're gonna be looking at a policy to address harass- hu- harassment and bullying that leads to a hostile work environment, and yes, I definitely think we should do that. And I think collaborating with Pelham and any other committees that would like to do that is a good idea. Um, I, I think we need to articulate a little more clearly uh for the public um exactly what's been going on. Um, we've talked around it and a, a bit, a bit direct, directly on it, but I think I, I sort of see this as a collaboration between the public and the school committee and administration. And um, and I think the first, the first logical step in getting to a solution is to, is to identify the problem as specifically as possible. So I think uh in that sort of fact-finding spirit, uh I, it, it, there's, there's two things that, that I would like to see happen. One is I, I'd like to uh hear from the superintendent and assistant superintendent a, a little more specifically, what, to what degree is this a current issue for you and your staff? Uh, and, and what is the nature and extent of, of this, this harassment? Uh, including, we've, we've, we've heard people mention emails. Does this include phone calls, uh actions at formal meetings, informal encounters, public records requests, uh other forms of communication? You know, what, what, what is the nature of this problem? So that's, that's one. This, the, the second is I, I thi- I think the school are, uh, we as a committee can share with the public uh in a bit more direct detail, what, what we've observed happening for the past year and a half, because this has been a long process that we have observed. And, and what we've been seeing i- is not normal. Like we're, we're not talking about mainline, someone pops off and loses their cool. This is, this is abnormal activity that we have been seeing. Uh, it's what I'm specifically referring to is this, this, and it's already been mentioned, the sustained high volume of direct personal criticisms, not policy cri- personal criticisms and accusations of wrongdoing through, through email that we've seen, but also through public internet and social media channels that have targeted, but have not been limited to the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, the finance director, the special ed director, the assistant special ed director, the high school principal, the middle school principal, and numerous teachers and staff and multiple individuals on this committee. And that, that's an, that's an incomplete list that we've observed. And yeah, again, to be clear, we're not talking about strongly worded criticism or even passionate emotion, which I completely agree with Ms. Ordonez, we should totally welcome, and that's part of the nature of what we do here. But, but these are personal criticisms, that when you, they're combined with the accusations in this extreme high volume aggregate that we've observed can be reasonably constituted as intimidation, bullying or harassment. And, and not only do our staff not deserve that, but when I hear from our assistant superintendent that morale has been compromised, and, and when I read some of the specific examples of what I, in my view, are vile personal criticisms, i- it really concerns me. And, and I don't know what the solution is, but I do think in order to get there, it has to be a collaboration between the school committee, the public and, and the administration. Uh, and the, the reason we're engaging on this difficult topic is because we do want to create and maintain that safe environment for our teachers and staff.
Mr. Manino?
I encourage you to formulate a policy if for no other reason to find out how difficult it will be. Uh, these emails make me sick to my stomach. They raise questions of fact that I can't begin to address. Uh, they accuse certain staff members of doing something. I don't know whether they did them. What are the consequences on a member of the public violating the, the policy? I can't begin to visualize a formulation of a consequence that we can mete out. But I think it's important that the community knows, that we know that it's a problem and that we're trying to ev- fashion a, a remedy. But uh what is the solution except just to endure? Uh, harsh language, the presidential contenders say things that are harsh and demeaning. Uh, what is the consequence?
I think, I, so um, I'm not, and I'm not trying to directly debate or respond to what you're saying, but one of, I think one of the things which is challenging is uh, and I, I, I intentionally wasn't being specific earlier, A to frame out the issue, so I think it's important to, and B because the challenge of this is this is an issue that's acutely personal for those people that's affected. And I did not feel like, I'm just saying this openly, I don't feel like I have the authority to essentially put people on the spot about the content of what they've experienced and the content of how that might affect them, or how they should feel about being attacked in their identity, their person, um, uh their character. And that's happened to multiple people. I've seen the emails. Uh, and so, and so it's also not hard to find, right? It's actually documented uh in our servers. Um, but it is again, the challenge of the topic is that you, you want, you wanna give agency to people to speak for themselves and empower themselves and defending themselves. You don't wanna be in a position where you're essentially um, someone has to relive a trauma twice. Um, first time by having the experience, second time by having it named publicly, even if somebody thinks they're trying to be helpful. Um, although interestingly enough, Mr. Manino, uh, that giving agency to people is in fact an important part of morale building. If you have a process that allows someone to call something by its name, by their perception, come forward and file and document, and have responsible parties who are willing to take it seriously and evaluate the claim in a spirit that's supportive, that actually is itself important. The second thing I'd say is, and I'm not trying to get into, we, we need to look into this if we're gonna look into this. But the second thing you can do is particularly if you're talking about um people who work for the district. It's harder for school committee members, to be honest with you, but, cause we're elected officials. But for people who work for the district, um, if there's a member of the public who's engaging in repeated pattern of, of hostile communication, then the superintendent has the ability to reassign that chain of communication in a way that um removes the individual who's being targeted from that chain of communication. If you think about it in terms of, oh, well, that means you're preventing me from talking to the district. It's like, no, no, you're not. I'm just changing the person who's doing it. For the individual who's no longer being, as they perceive it, harassed or bullied, on the other hand, that's made every difference in the world, because they're no longer being harassed or bullied, right? It doesn't solve the whole global problem, but the reality is what we have here is a situation that can feel global, but is, is actually composed of the microdemic experiences of dozens of individuals when they come to work of a morning, when they open up their email, when they answer, they look, when they look to see, what am I approaching this day? Each one of those individuals and the work environment they have and the supportiveness they feel, their experience is critical. And so some of the tools we might be able to develop might be more targeted towards the circumstance of different kinds of personnel or staff. Um, I think beyond that, we need to be guided by the laws to whether or not there are other remedies that would actually prevent people from, depending on their behavior, coming onto school property or otherwise engaging um publicly. But again, I wanna say, because we think the circumstances, I think we'd say two things. One, the general sentiment is the circumstances we're experiencing now probably rise to the test. Some would say certainly, but I'm just simply saying we're not, we're not kicking this out of thin air shallowly. There's a big deal thing going on. And we're trying to figure out how do we develop the appropriate tools that could be genuinely responsive. I just gave, I just gave you an example of
We should do something.
Individual employee. So we've gotta look for that.
I agree.
Sorry, Mr. Fudge?
Yeah, um, I, I think we're experiencing a situation that's been aggravat- aggravated um by changes in technology. I don't believe that this is merely a problem that's existed for a year and a half. Um, I think this kind of various levels of character assassination have persisted in this community for a long, long time. Um, they now are capable of communicating those efforts via um social media. But to assume that they didn't exist prior to this current age, I think is a serious mistake. Um, it says something about um the degree to which people have, in my judgment, have misti- mistakenly, seriously mistakenly, the true um meaning, if you will, at least in our society legally and constitutionally, the meaning of free speech. And free speech is something that we've always struggled with trying to both define and curb. Um, I think we should develop a policy. I, I unfortunately, my own personal experience and i- i- we're not going to get rid of this kind of um really repugnant, despicable language used to characterize people, whether they're staff or not. Uh, it's endemic to a broader society than Amherst. And um if we can create a policy which at least minimizes it to some extent, all well and good. But there's something um, well, I, I, there's something very rotten in public discourse these days. Um, and um I think that's what people are experiencing, but to assume that it's just now, I think is a serious mistake.
So I wanna go around the committee for any final thoughts people have on this topic, as well as um, I'm starting to hear some consensus from those people who've spoken, that we should do some, do something to develop or advance developing a policy. But I just wanna make sure people have a chance to um, if they have any comments or questions or other thoughts, that they're able to do that. So.
Sure. Um, I have a lot of thoughts on this, but some of them have already been stated by others. So um first I wanna start with, and also Allison and I are both members of the Policy Subcommittee, she's the chair, but it feels like a lot to put on the Policy Subcommittee to solve this problem. Um, and if we do, and I, I'm happy to read policies, I'm happy to try and draft some and be um involved in getting into the nitty gritty of this, but I, I would want the full engagement of HR here, um, Ms. Cunningham, potentially, maybe others. And also potentially council, just because we're talking about this really fine line. And if we get it wrong, it's just gonna feed the, the, the flames of what's happening, I feel like, in terms of if we're perceived as trying to quash criticism in this community. In particular, I think we could be um just, we're walking on a razor's edge when it comes to crafting a policy. So I, I'm happy to, to take a lead as a member of the Policy Subcommittee, but I think we'd wanna do so with, with the engagement of others outside of that, cause it's just, I guess, four of us. But um, the other thing is I, I But the other thing is, I, I think there is value, even if the policy doesn't necessarily give us new tools to deal with this, I think what you said before about just being able to name it and acknowledge that this thing that's happening to me, when I open my inbox, it's, it is, it, you know, it, it sounds like what's in this policy. And so, you know, for, for an employee to be able to name it and then be able to feel like there's something wrong here and I have, and this is how I can go about addressing it, and, and maybe it's not gonna solve the problem completely, but I, I think we need to be able to validate people's experiences and give them the support that they need to cope with them. So one of the things that I think is frustrating is that a lot of individuals are experiencing this, and so it'd be interesting to understand how, if at all, they're gaining support from each other, because we're not alone in it, but it kind of, and I can only speak as my experience is receiving these emails as a school committee member, but sometimes it feels really alone, because you're alone, read, opening this inbox, and you're like, am I the only one who's having this reaction to this? Is there, you know, and to hear that it's part of a much, much bigger problem is, in some ways, disheartening, but it's also helpful to know that there are other people going through the same experience, and we might have some ability to deal with it by acknowledging that and finding out how other people are dealing with it. I don't know if that makes sense to others, but I think the other question that I think would be useful is to talk about, you know, Mr. Dumbling was talking about specifics of what's been happening, but I think, looking, you know, on one of the policies here, it says that harassment, it defines something that substantially disrupts the orderly operation of the school. So I'm concerned about the effects on employees, but I'm also concerned about the effects on students, and if we're spending significant resources, either time or cost, if we're responding to, you know, the cross for information, all of these things, you know, just the energy we're spending right now, this has, because cost is not talking about something else, we're, we're talking about this. So I think that would be really helpful in communicating to the public or just documenting in some way what's going on. So, thank you.
Ms. McDonald?
Well, I won't even bother. I, I don't really have anything to add, everybody has spoken very eloquently and, and I, and I think well, and echoed a lot of my, my same thoughts. I, I do agree with what you both have said about this, as, as with any policy, it needs to be written by the entire, by the full committee and with the full committee's input, with council input. We're not, none of us are attorneys on the Policies Subcommittee, and, and so I, I wholeheartedly support that. I, I will offer and ask the question, somebody has to do the drafting, you know, we can't sit here all together writing, so I don't know what process might work, and maybe others that have been around, you know, around on the school committee for longer than I have might have ideas there, but I do agree that this is very, very important, something that we should address with, with some sense of urgency, and how we want to do that, I think is the next question.
So, I, I think we framed it out as going to the Policies Subcommittee, because we're talking about a policy. So, so I think if we didn't start there, we were doing a disservice somehow of the Because by one wonderful coincidence, the vice chair of the Regional School Committee happens to be the chair of the Policies Subcommittee, I reckon the, and others can be involved as long as it doesn't make a quorum, but I guess I'd encourage that if people want to be. But what I would suggest that we do as an af- as an after action after this meeting is that we meet and sit down with the superintendent and the assistant superintendent and potentially the, our attorney, and sort of try to start mapping out how we can take next steps and approach it in a way that respects the position of the Subcommittee. I think we have a policy that actually says that these policies have to go through that committee. So, not to sound funny about this, but that can either be literally something being generated by that committee, or there could be a procedural element of it being, you know, largely crafted, and then that committee could meet and vote or whatever, or we could frankly suspend our rules at some point with a vote that formally adopts that, but I want to make sure we don't do something like this, and somebody looks at it and says, well, you didn't even follow your own, you know, your own committee rules, so we'll have to figure that out. So, and, and obviously, I think the comments that are being made that it needs to be sort of a working group or team that includes the assistant superintendent, not in her role as the head of HR, makes tremendous sense, so. And there may be others, in other words, that the superintendent or Ms. Cunningham think of, that would be involved on the administrative side, that if you think of them, great, you know what I mean? We're trying to make this an effective working group, not, not, I don't know, just name parties. There, you, I guess if there are members of the committee that would like to be involved in this beyond, at this, I'm sorry, let me back up. The whole committee's gonna be involved in this. I'm saying in terms of the initial cogitating and getting together, if there are other people who'd like to be involved in the committee, you can either let us know now, or you can let us know after this meeting. I don't really care, as long, if we reach, once we reach four, that group is capped, as you can imagine. Does that sound like a reasonable plan? Since we've already, since everyone has expressed a desire to try to move forward on this topic, then we're gonna move forward on this topic. We don't need to vote to do that. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. Yes.
So I just want to come back to, there were disparate comments, but I'm connecting them, so a comment Mr. Demling made about kind of identifying more fully for the committee, what emails are coming in, you know, content quality, and then Ms. Spitzer's comment about, you know, feeling, I'm sorry, I didn't capture the language, but it was isolated or alone as you're reading them, and I think one of the challenges that, that we face is because of the nature of the emails, I guess I struggle with, there's a lot of people's rights involved, privacy rights, and what I can share with the committee versus, I mean, certainly it's all public recordable, and I'm aware of that, but that's, I think, where I struggle with it, and I'm just being very transparent that, that I feel awkward having information or seeing emails that I'm not sharing with the full committee, because it's pertinent, but at the same time, I have to respect privacy rights of people who are on them, and, and so I don't know how to reconcile that, I'll do some thinking about it, and ideas would be helpful. Public records is a little cleaner, and I can share, you know, have that data, but maybe I'll share it more fully in an email this week, just so that you at least have that one, because it's less, less personal in nature, but certainly no less impactful in terms of the operations of the district. But I think, you know, I want to acknowledge both of those points and say that I'm struggling myself on how to, what people's right to privacy is and versus making sure the committee has enough pertinent information to understand the topic that we're talking about. And so, again, ideas, and it doesn't have to be right now, but ideas that people might generate would be, would be great, but it is a real conflict for me, and I don't mean just a real conflict how to do, but it's also a real conflict of how do you all have relevant information to consider, and I'm not at resolution yet on how to approach that, but I want to actually voice that.
Just in sheer numbers, do you have a sense of how many emails, how many people, don't, don't, you don't even need to describe any details to it.
Right.
But how many, I mean, if it's something like that, how many public records requests, have there been a lot of them?
Sure.
I mean, what are we looking, I mean, what are we looking at here?
So-
By the way, just for the public's information, I already know the answer in general terms, and the answer is, it's a lot. But my, my, my point is, because we're doing this in public, the only element, there's, there are many things about what Mr. Demling and Ms. Spitzer said, they made enormous sense, but, but the challenge we have beyond that-
Right.
-is apart from whatever we think, there's a public out there that's, that's, some people are gonna be listening to all this-
Right.
-and they're gonna be saying, I don't really get this, are you talking about like, you know, twenty emails or something?
Right.
That some of them are really nasty, or, I mean, or what? I mean, what are you talking about?
Yeah, so in the last, if you look at like roughly the last seventy-five business days, so roughly three months, we've received eighty-six, this is total, eighty-six public records requests from a total of five individuals or organizations, because sometimes it comes from an organization, so we preserved, received eighty-two, sometimes they're couched in multiple ones in the same email, and that's true for all of these requesters, but eighty-two from one party and one each from four other parties. And just for scale, you know, Wellesley, you know, felt like it was excessive and, and challenged when they had two hundred over the course of five years. So we're slated to be two hundred in the course of five months at this pace, or a little less, my math's a little off on that, less than a year for sure. So I think, you know, something that I'll come back to is, is some communities have had to add staffing to manage that, and it's not just the person who receives the requests, it's that the requests require someone else to be gathering data. So a typical request would be emails that involves IS, it involves someone to look if there's any redactions needed, or a request might be something that's in the business office or the human resources office, so the person who is the receiver of the request is responsible for filling it, but often has to rely on others for data. So that's one thing that's objective, that's clean, that I can say that doesn't, you know, compromise anybody's sense of privacy. So, it's one data point.
Mr. Funch, and we probably need to move on relatively soon, but Ms. Funch?
Just really quickly, there was a time when blogs in town were numerous and contained really brutal information or innuendo and attacks on people, including the entire school committee at times. So I, I think we need to be careful, we're not gonna solve this problem, because there are various forms of media that people can use to communicate whatever it is on their mind. We just have to make sure we're prepared to protect staff against any and all attacks that are irresponsible and reprehensible.
Mr. Doniz, what was the language that you read earlier?
Excuse me?
Mr. Doniz, what was the language that you read earlier from that other policy?
Yeah.
There was, there was an interesting language, use of language there.
So the hostile environment means that the victim subjectively views the conduct as harassment or bullying, and that the conduct, conduct is objectively severe or pervasive enough that a reasonable person would agree that it is harassment or bullying. A hostile environment may be created through pervasive or persistent misbehavior, or a single incident is sufficiently severe. Again, that's from the North Carolina School Board.
So we're, we're just embarking on this, on this topic, so I would love to close it, unless there are any other comments, but what I was gonna say though, because I think, I think Mr. Funch brought up at the end, the tension point again, between free speech rights and a policy like this, and I want to just say it again, we said it at the beginning, multiple people have said it during, we've said it toward the end, now we're gonna say it again at the end. We, we are going to actively be ensuring and thinking about ways to ensure that the public's right to engage, criticize, speak in ways that sometimes feels untoward are always protected, period. And so, that's gonna be hard to do, and I think as Mr. Manino suggested earlier, we'll see if we can even come up with a policy that feels workable in the end. So it's not, this isn't, this, we're, we are committed to that. I heard it from everyone else who's sitting here, I'm sitting in his chair, the only way I'm moving forward with this is if we keep that tension point honest. But I also think that the language that Ms. Ordonez just read is meaningful, it's very meaningful, and it starts to set a standard for what we're looking at and understanding when we see something that we think could constitute harassment and bullying, and I think the plain use of ordinary language and ordinary perspective and evidence can suggest people why it's important to try to address it as a committee and as a community. So, yeah?
So just very briefly, something I meant to say earlier, it's just another stakeholder group, whether they literally sit on a Subcommittee or just, or just gathered feedback, might be some of the heads of our employee, employee associations, because certainly in some of the instances, there's been concerns raised from that vantage point as well. So just, I don't want to, you know, administrators make sense, and I'm not against, it's not disagreeing with that, but they might be another resource or sounding board, or I think it'd be a good connection to me.
Yes.
Yeah. Forgot saying that earlier.
Okay, we're moving on on the agenda. The la- the last item we have before adjournment is accepting gifts. Mr. Demling, do you have anything on your mind?
I move to accept the following gifts. From RK Miles to support donation of lumber to make dividers, total estimate of two hundred dollars. From Lisa and Matt Kane, number two four eight four, to support field hockey remaining fundraiser donation, the amount of forty-five dollars and forty-one cents, for a total of forty-five dollars and forty-one cents.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved the second event, Ms. McDonald, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. It carries unanimously, seven to nothing. Do you have any, Ms. Doniz, do you have anything further on your mind?
I would like to move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Second event, Ms. Spitzer. This is not debatable, all those in favor, carries unanimously, we are adjourned.